Okay, I'd like to call the order of the Sparks City Council Meeting of December 14th, 2015. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay. Next, if you'd all stand for the invocation speaker, please. Pastor Barb West, Sparks Church of the Nazarene. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Would you just join with me in prayer, please? So, our Father in Heaven, we just come to you this afternoon, refreshing and renewed, to thank you for today and for this fine city council and for our mayor. And we pray that you would give wisdom and direction to each and every member of this fine council because you know the importance of this meeting. We pray too for safety over our schoolchildren and our first responders and our police officers and firefighters as well. We pray for your direction, for your protection, and for your provision. We thank you that we have the privilege to be in the United States of America and especially in this great town called Sparks, Nevada. Blessed and us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. That was very nice. Appreciate it. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Bybee, would you lead us, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If you want to make comments under comments from the public, please fill out one of these cards and bring it up to the clerk, please, and she'll get you on. We have quite a few here, so let's get it started. We have Paul Lenars. Want to speak, please? Come on up, sir. Followed by Pat Fling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council people. My name is Paul Leonard, and I come from your neighboring community of Reno. I'm here to speak to the fourth item, the question of licensing for plumbing and electrical work in buildings, private and public. I like my house. I like to feel safe in my house. There's a lot of things that don't make me feel unsafe: weather, terrorism, stuff like that, street crime. But what I like to be confident of is that my house itself isn't going to kill me. If your electricity ain't going to spark, the house ain't going to burn. The pipes ain't going to burst, it ain't going to flood. It takes a certain level of skill to produce that. Now, I know that the contractor in charge of the overall job when he built my house was watching the work of the other people. Sure. Just like when I was a respiratory therapist, a doctor watched over my work so one could say, "All I have to do is just follow the instructions were given me." Wrong. So many things can go wrong, and if you don't know what you're looking at, you don't know that it's wrong. I feel the same way about people in any other skilled trade. Let's not dilute the skill level of our workers. Let's not dilute the quality of our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pat Fling.
Thank you.
Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Pat Fling, a Sparks resident, the Executive Director of Action. Action gathers the stories of people of diverse religions, income, race, and gender to create a community that's just for all people, especially the most disadvantaged. We work together to listen to the stories of everyday people and respond to their needs on a policy level. We develop relationships with local elected officials to help together to find those solutions. The issue of apprenticeship and training is one of those issues. We have heard over and over again through one-to-one conversations locally that our people care about ladders to living wage jobs, and we need for local people to be hired for work on new developments. We urge you to keep the standards for apprenticeship and to enforce those standards to protect access to living wage jobs and to quality workmanship. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Pat. Danielle Henderson.
You might want to mention these people. I think there's plenty of seats in here.
Okay. You know, the people that are sitting outside, there are seats in here. If you want to jump in here somewhere and take a seat, we have empty ones. These are all right. You can sit next to somebody. It's okay. Go ahead, Danielle.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Henderson. I am the Natural Resource Manager for the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, a consortium of Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County. Our agency's mission is to plan, design, and build infrastructure to protect the Truckee Meadows community from devastating flood impacts. We have been working diligently with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to implement the flood project. Congress authorized the project last year. We are now working with our lobbyists and delegates to secure federal funding for project construction. We are also exploring options to raise local funds to pay for construction. In the meantime, using sales tax funds specifically dedicated by Washoe County for flood protection and by leveraging numerous public-private partnerships and grants, our agency has purchased flood-prone properties along the Truckee River, relocated businesses out of the floodplain, demolished at-risk structures located in the floodplain, built levees and flood walls to protect businesses, initiated our residential home elevation program, and helped restore habitat for native species along the lower Truckee River. In coordination with the U.S. Geological Survey and emergency managers, we operate and maintain a network of stream gauges that monitor river stage as part of a regional flood warning system. Director J.L. Dean is scheduled to present an update on the flood project at your next concurrent meeting on February 1st. I am here today simply to remind everyone that flood season is officially underway. As you know, many of our most devastating floods occur during the winter months. Some of you remember the 1997 New Year's flood, which caused approximately $700 million in damages in Washoe County alone and more than $1 billion in damages across northern Nevada. Washoe, Carson, Douglas, Story, and Lion Counties were declared federal disaster areas. Experts estimate that another similar flood could cause $2 billion in damages. The Flood Authority is part of an inter-agency campaign to raise public awareness of flooding in Nevada and to help businesses and residents better prepare for flood emergencies. I would encourage you to visit nevadafloods.org website to learn more about flood risk and preparedness. I would also like to give each of you a pocket reference guide, right here, that contains valuable information on what to do before, during, and after a flood in order to protect yourself, your loved ones, and your home in the event of a flood emergency. Keep it in your car or put it in your emergency kit. And please, feel free to contact our office with any flood-related questions or concerns. We are here to help. And with that, on behalf of the Flood Authority, I wish you all a safe, warm, and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. I believe we have some questions. I'm sorry you got mixed in with the deal we're talking about today because this is very important, too, the message that you are bringing us today, too.
Oh, sure, that's fine. It's nice to have a crowd.
Ron Schmidt.
Sorry. I'm sorry how the flood was mixed in and all this other stuff.
It's very random, sort of.
Actually, your presence appeared here very timely because we do have an item on the agenda.
You know, I know you were -- the city of Sparks spent about $25 million already in the last two years in flood control projects to help out, you know, what you're trying to get federal funding for. And on today's agenda, we have another $20 million bond that we're going to get authorized through the Finance Department to finish that project up. And so I would be remiss of not, you know, stroking the city of Sparks for how we're spending money to go ahead and solve that very issue that you're working on. And we appreciate you. I think, you know, I hope we don't have another flood of '97 this year, but I think we're going to have a pretty tough, wet winter this year and a lot of issues to deal with. So thank you very much for coming here and being part of the process.
You're very welcome. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thanks, Danielle. Appreciate it. Tom Porchot. Welcome, Tom. Followed by Dale Lowry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Tom Porchot. He had it close. Good afternoon. I'm an electrical contractor in Reno, operating Intermountain Electric. I've been involved in electrical construction industry in this area for over 38 years, and I'm here today to speak in opposition to removing the licensing requirement for electricians. An electrician is a highly skilled trade requiring specialized training and experience. If electrical works is installed improperly, it can result in catastrophic results such as fire and death. In order to safely perform electrical work, you must be able to read and understand the National Electrical Code, which is not real easy to do. You also have to -- it's updated every three years, so you have to be able to keep up with the updates. And in order to install electrical work properly, there's a lot of math and algebra to do it safely. I would ask that instead of eliminating the requirement for a license and jeopardizing the lives and property of the city -- people in the city of Sparks, that maybe you modify it so that it's agreeable to everybody. Minimum levels of training and experience are required for people who cut hair, paint fingernails, or sell real estate. To think that a minimum level of experience and training is not required in a license for somebody who doesn't do it right can result in death and destruction does not make sense to me. As an electrical contractor, I would ask that you maintain the electrical licensing requirements and enforcement. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And one other thing, you're not allowed to make any hair jokes up here, okay? We're serious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Lowry, followed by Sarah Klippenstein.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, my name is Dale Lowry. I'm a plumbing contractor. I have DND Plumbing here in Sparks, House of 1978. I also am the current chairman of the Nevada Board of Plumbing Examiners, and I also am a member of the Associated Builders and Contractors where we have a merit-open shop apprenticeship training program, and I teach in that program. I'm speaking now. If it goes too long, I'll miss my class, and I've got to teach tonight. Anyway, I am in opposition to removing this licensing requirement for plumbers and electricians. I spoke when you originally brought it forward. I think there could be changes in any of those ordinance where it could be passable for everyone. A lot of people have said this is a union versus non-union issue. No, it's an industry issue. It's where the industry is trying to maintain a level so that we can maintain the integrity in the field of plumbers and electricians because they are specialty contractors and they deal with licensing issues every day. And that's not life-saving from the standpoint of safety of employees or journeying plumber, but it's life-saving to the public itself. And then from the standpoint of gas explosions, oversized water piping systems, cross-connecting and catabal watering, and creating pollution in the water systems. These are very important in the industry. And without any planning, we're going to set up and help bring this forward about five years. Now, it's been brought to the North, both originally started in the South. And we have members in that, in the Savin Plum, DND Plumbing, New, Nevada Plumber Association, AGC, Local 350 Plumbers Union here in the North, City of Reno, and Washoe County in the North. And in the South, we have Park County, Building Department, the Plumbing, Heating, and Cooling Contractors Association, Local 525, Mechanical Contractors Association. So this is the industry getting together to maintain this licensing statewide currently. Now, we're not asking the city to issue cards and all of this. We're already doing it. We're asking you to recognize it and not do away with the licensing requirements that would be beneficial to the community as well as those working in those trades. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. One second, Dale. Ms. Ratty.
I just have one quick question. Can you tell me within the plumbing trades if there's a path forward to apprenticeship if you don't have a high school diploma?
If you don't have a high school diploma, you cannot get into a state apprenticeship or state-approved apprenticeship program. But in ABC, we have set it up so that the first year that -- and I think Local 350 probably does something similarly, they help them get their GED where they can go on and continue later on. So there is an avenue of coming on and getting that GED and then moving into the program.
Start your training and then get your GED while you're doing it. Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks. Thanks, Dale. Sarah Klippenstein, followed by J.D. Klippenstein. Welcome, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, city council persons, I'm Sarah Klippenstein, and I'm a Sparks resident, and I'm also an action leader from Sparks Christian Fellowship, and I'm also a mother. And I'm here because I am opposing the proposed changes to eliminate or reduce apprenticeship requirements for electricians and plumbers. As a mother, I'm very concerned about the quality of workmanship in the city of Sparks. I recognize that homeowners have invested, like ourselves, most of our assets in our homes. And just like ourselves, most homeowners count on the qualifications of electricians and plumbers to be of the highest caliber. I don't want to be up at night worrying about whether a house fire is possible or not due to the lack of standards in Sparks. So I ask that you please do the right thing and the moral thing and keep the requirements. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. You know, not fair. You know, you can't bring a cute little child like this up and then -- it's not fair. I'm sorry. Okay, J.D.
I'm probably loud enough. I'll just talk loudly. Mayor and city council people, thank you for your time. Like my wife, I am a leader with Action. My name is J.D. Klippenstein, and I also attend Sparks Christian Fellowship. I too oppose the proposed elimination of requirements for the apprenticeship program for electricians. And plumbers were new homeowners, so we figured out how complicated homeownership is in general, particularly when it comes to maintenance and making sure that what was in our house was properly installed. So I think that we feel this particularly strongly because we really value that the work is done well by knowledgeable folks who are trained in that. Not only am I concerned about the safety of my own home, but also my neighbors. If my neighbor's house burns down, it's much a problem for me as it is for my neighbor. Well, maybe not as much, but close enough. And we also feel that this moves Sparks backwards a bit, before there were building regulations, before there were requirements for skills in different trades. So we believe that in order for Sparks to move forward and for homeowners to feel safe in our city, that we would not support this proposed regulation or deregulation, rather. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, folks. I did the same thing when I bought my first house. I had no clue what you had to do.
Right over my head.
Exactly. Buy a house, you think you're done? No.
Thank you, sir.
John Schroeder.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Schroeder. I live in Reno, and I work with Ryder Homes. And I'm here to speak about the plumber and electrician certification ordinance removal. First of all, I want to commend the city council and the staff for pursuing removal of this requirement. Most often, we add regulations, and many of which make business more complicated. Seldom do we ever remove those that are inapplicable, unnecessary. And you're demonstrating that in this case. This is definitely an unnecessary requirement. You know, I've been in the construction industry over 50 years, and the first half of my career I was a union contractor and supervised union apprentices and journeymen. We built complex buildings, high-rise wastewater treatment plants. The last half of my career has been here in northern Nevada in residential construction. Now, if we're talking about quality of work here, quality, training, and certification is not directly related to quality. Quality comes from a passion the worker has to do the job well. Think of the people you work with, the ones that do good jobs. I am sure you will find they have this passion. My experience has been that I get just as good a quality of work from my non-union tradesman today as I've received from a union journeyman years ago. And these non-union tradesmen are trained. They're trained by their employer. They get on-the-job training from other tradesmen. They get training from manufacturers. And their training is more than adequate for the work that they do. We use licensed contractors on our work, and they are the ones responsible to us for the quality of the workmanship. They are the ones responsible to see that their people are trained and properly supervised. Now, as I've listed today, this really isn't a safety in the workplace issue. And of course, we know that OSHA is the predominant workplace safety authority and agency in this country. So there's no need for the city to jump in and take on the burden of another safety program. But people have brought up issues of public safety. I'll tell you, for like commercial and residential construction, the wiring and plumbing is not complicated. And we have the least problems in our work with our electricians and plumbers. We have problems with other trades, but these guys, we have the least problems. When systems are more complex, developers can hire a union contractor. The proponents of keeping this requirement on the books are predominantly organized labor and those entities that provide the training. For them, it's about membership and money. Please continue to remove this unnecessary requirement from the building codes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Beth Bishop. Welcome, Beth. Followed by Nancy Oakley.
Good afternoon, city councilwoman and Mayor Martini. I am Betty Bishop, a Sparks resident and an action leader from the Catholic community. I oppose the proposed changes to eliminate or reduce apprenticeship requirements for plumbers and electricians in the city of Sparks. As a retired teacher, I know that apprenticeship programs are a great ladder to good-paying jobs for our people. Not all young people are suited for college, and apprenticeship programs which require high school diplomas or GEDs are a good pathway for continued education while creating a leadership or a learning ladder. It is important that we build our next skilled workforce for the future. And I firmly believe that if we stop investing in people, it's just bad business. It's bad business for our community and for our society. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. There's another microphone right here, Nancy, that you can use. Just press the button there to make sure it's on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I'm Nancy Oakley. I'm also an action leader, and I attend the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. I retired from the state of Nevada after 20 years as the chief of benefits in the Unemployment Insurance Division for the Department of Employment and Training and Rehabilitation. And in that position, I saw firsthand how that apprenticeship programs are a smart way to help folks earn a living wage in northern Nevada. I saw people who struggled daily, who did not earn a living wage, struggle to make their ends meet and to live here in our community. I believe that it's important that we establish workforce standards that value education and that the apprenticeship programs are a way for us to do that. So I strongly oppose that, the regulation eliminating the requirements for apprenticeship and certifications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I have one here. I think it says Eddie. Eddie, I can't read the last name. I'm sorry. Anybody? Eddie? Eddie Street? Eddie Seet? Eddie?
What is the Eddie Scott?
Scott. Eddie, you're not a doctor, are you? You got a good chance because you write prescriptions like ones, huh? I'm sorry, Eddie. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and the -- to members of the council, my name's Eddie Scott, one of those who remember Sparks when they called it a town. Youngster worked at the Roundhouse. If I say that, you can ask your grandparents what he talking about. Southern Pacific Roundhouse. Now, I just said that to say, you know, I've been introduced to Sparks for a long time. I kind of were interested in the big bill that Congress just passed to build roads and bridges. And the money that's going to come to the cities and the counties. And the money is, of course, that bill has just been passed. By the time they get ready to pass it all out, I wonder if the county, the council here, whatever its plan on action, would postpone any action to do anything until such time it finds out how much money is going to be coming to the cities and the council. And I'm sure you're very much aware, everyone's aware, the bill now just passed Congress and sent up to be signed by the president. Before, when they had money passed out, they were begging people to take it. A lot of it went back. So I just want to bring that, mention that. That's my interest to mention that. I'm here supporting Action. I'm a member of Action, active in Action, the NACP, and other community activities. I was also ran a job center here for 12 years, helping people to get jobs. And training in needing jobs is one of the things that we know. So I just want to ask the council if it would postpone any action that it may take until that money has been brought down in the county, in the city, rather, has had a chance to see how this money is to be distributed. So I thank you for the time, and thank you for speaking with you.
Thanks, Eddie. Appreciate you being here today. Okay, I have no more public comments under number four. Now, anybody else under just public comments? If you want to speak about 10.2, you'll have another chance when the actual agenda item comes up. So I just want you to know that. These are all the cards I have for 10.4 or for number four, public speaking. So we're going to move on unless somebody else wants to speak. Okay. Number five, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as outlined.
Of a second, Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council Workshop of November 16th, 2015, and the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of November 23rd, 2015. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the minutes of the council workshop of November 16th and the regular meeting of November 23rd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next, a 7.1 proclamation, Reno Rodeo Foundation Denim Drive. I believe I have that here, and we have some people here to --
There's a few of us that are here.
Few cowboy hats on here.
I'm not here to speak about licensing, although many of you know that it's interesting that I'm here today hearing all of that, but that's another story. So we're just thrilled to be here. We appreciate Mr. Mayor and council members' opportunity. I understand with the Reno Rodeo and the partnership we have with the Reno Rodeo Foundation, I am the executive director of the Reno Rodeo Foundation. We literally clothed abused, neglected, and abandoned children in 14 northern Nevada counties, and we're more than thrilled to have you recognize the great work that we do. Before the Reno Rodeo Foundation came into play, there wasn't any organization that did this. We provide new clothing, and it's more than just a pair of jeans. It's truly a world of difference, having that new pair of clothes, whatever it may be, and those basics. Some children had nothing, nothing. So we appreciate all the support of the community. We couldn't do it without everyone. And I'd like to invite the volunteers up, and we have a little something for you. I don't know how many of you remember Rhythm and Rahai, but those that have lived in northern Nevada for years remember Rhythm and Rahai. We're bringing it back. We're bringing it back on May 20th, 2016. We welcome everyone to attend, and certainly appreciate, again, the support for the denim drive, and it is our largest fundraiser, is Rhythm &amp; Rawhide, so plenty of notice. Buy now your cowgirl, cowboy boots, and your hat. So, anyway, I don't know if you would like to read the proclamation, or what you'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, at this time.
Well, see, you stole all my thunder with everything you said.
I did, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to say now.
No. Well, I was trying to get, so that you can see everyone or hear everyone for the item that's on the agenda that people are here to really talk about, so...
We're here to read the proclamation, I'm ready. Is it okay if I go ahead?
Absolutely, sir.
Proclamation, whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation's Denim Drive is an initiative dedicated to providing new clothing to infants, children, and teens rescued from the unsafe homes throughout 14 northern Nevada counties, and they are committed to collaborating with state and county agencies who support foster care and provide emergency shelter to the children in protective custody. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation Board of Trustees are committed to dedicating 100% of all financial donations to be restricted to purchase clothing throughout the year for the children. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation's Denim Drive helps clothe children in foster care and protective custody 24 hours a day and 365 days a year. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation Board of Trustees recognizes and acknowledges its community partners, including the Reno Rodeo Association, the Reno Rodeo Volunteers, the State of Nevada Division of Child and Family Services, and Washoe County Social Services. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation Board of Trustees appreciates the philanthropic generosity... Thanks, Clara.
You're welcome.
Philanthropic generosity of northern Nevadans, as well as the business community who provide funding to purchase new clothing throughout the year. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation's Denim Drive understands that it's more than just one pair of jeans, it is a world of difference for many children who experienced the unimaginable... You're killing me. You're killing me. Exactly. Let me say that one again, unimaginable. And whereas the Reno Rodeo Foundation's Denim Drive doesn't just provide new clothing, it creates a mindset that instills self-worth and builds self-esteem for thousands of neglected, abused, and abandoned children in northern Nevada. Now, therefore, I, Reno R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim December 2015 as Reno Rodeo Foundation Denim Drive Month. Thank you.
Can we take a picture? Can we take a picture with the esteemed elected officials?
I hope so. Do you want to go back up here?
Wherever you want us. Come to you. We will. I can't leave my horse up there too often, Mr. Lawrence might actually...
Double park.
Yeah, exactly. Where do you want us?
Here.
Just come up front.
Ms. Reno Rodeo Queen is here today.
She is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we doing it?
Are we doing it?
Are we doing it, Kelly? Are we okay?
Yeah, perfect.
All right.
One, two, three, one more.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
First time we're...
Yeah, we have a meeting.
Thank you.
Do you want to share a name? Byby over here would be invited.
Thank you.
Yes. You guys have to talk.
You're just calling me, Nancy.
Congratulations.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I just wanted to comment real briefly, and thank you for...
For the work that you do, it's so incredibly important. The Reno Rodeo Foundation itself is such a great community partner, and I've been involved through the years in a lot of different community activities and United Way and things that do similar things, but I've always just appreciated the Reno Rodeo Foundation for your, what you do for kids in our community, and encourage everyone to participate and drop off your donations and go online, because it's super important. I just wanted to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, and from now on, Clara, you are not allowed to write any proclamations, okay?
Not about any ordinances.
You got to put that dictionary away, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, folks, appreciate you being here.
Happy holidays to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
We're giving away 255,000 toys, so we have to act.
All right. See ya, thanks. Okay, next, the 7.2, Washoe County Health Department EMS Oversight Program. Chief, welcome.
Afternoon, Mayor, city council members. For the record, Tom Garrison, Fire Chief. With me today is Christina Conti. Christina Conti is the EMS Program Manager for the Washoe County Health Department. She supervises the EMS Oversight Program and also monitors compliance with REMZA's franchise agreement. Some of her job responsibilities are to work with all the EMS providers in the region to identify and resolve disputes. You can, I guess, you can imagine how hard that would be with three fire departments and REMZA resolving disputes, but Christina does an excellent job. After she resolves the disputes, she makes recommendations to the District Board of Health, ultimately to improve the quality and the efficiency of EMS delivery in Washoe County. Her presentation today is an oversight of approximately the first, what, 15 to 18 months of this program. So Christina?
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Martini, Manager Driscoll, members of the council, thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. We thought it was important to circle back with the different councils on the work that we've been doing and just keep you updated. Quick history, for those of you who might be new with the EMS, we, the Health District got the ability to oversee EMS and have an exclusive franchise for ambulance transport here in this region in '86. In 2014, through a very long process, there was a new amended and restated franchise agreement for ambulance service, and that's what we're currently under right now. Through that process, there was also an inter-local agreement that was signed, and that's what created our program. So all the jurisdictions, the Health District, Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection Board, Board of Fire Commissioners, City of Reno and City of Sparks signed this agreement, and that's what governs what we do. It changed what we had originally been doing, which was just franchise compliance, and expanded it to allow there to be more EMS performance review also, and it opened the doors for data collection and reporting to happen, not just from the contractor, REMZA, through that franchise agreement, but then all the partners, so that we can see what our region actually looks like for emergency medical services. The EMS Advisory Board was created out of that inter-local agreement, and the members on the board are Mr. Driscoll, the city manager from Reno, the Washoe County manager, our district board, our district health officer, and then we have two appointments from the District Board of Health. So one is the emergency room physician, Dr. Michelson, and the other one is Terry Ward with Northern Nevada Medical Center, and so that completes our board. They meet quarterly, and the purpose of them is to then look at the topics, do a concurrent review of the topics before they get brought back before the councils or before the District Board of Health, so having a stopgap, if you will, where all the region is looking at the same things together, making decisions collectively before it moves forward. So then the other thing that the inter-local agreement did was it created our program. There are three of us, we are small but mighty, if I may say myself. We have me, who's the EMS Program Manager, so I oversee the day-to-day operations of the program. I look at, as Chief Garrison was saying, the investigations that, complaints that come forward from either partner agencies or citizens are able to do complaints as well. And then I look at the performance aspect of the region, and so anything that is not compliance is really sort of what I'm working with. I'd like to introduce you to Brittany Dayton. She's the EMS Coordinator, so everything with the franchise and with compliance, that's really what Brittany takes the lead on, and then that includes also, we have a regional multi-casualty incident plan and the massive evacuation annex, so that if we had some kind of incident in our region that either required a lot of care from the hospitals or the evacuation of the hospitals, then those are regional plans that Brittany oversees the development on. And then Heather Curran wasn't able to be here today, but she is our statistician, and she is incredible. She takes nine different data sets, because we get it from the regional partners, we get it from the airports, we get it from the tribes, we get it from GRLAC Volunteer Fire Department, we, North Lake Tahoe, so we have data being submitted from those outside our region, and then she takes those and she creates those reports, so that we can really see what our region is looking like. I'm not going to read these to you, you can take a look, but there are eight program duties that are specifically required of us through the inter-local agreement, and really what they all boil down to is the coordination and the collaboration of furthering the EMS system here in Washoe County. It also requires us to have a five-year strategic plan, and so making those recommendations, looking to the future, all of that is what is required of us through the inter-local agreement. So, we last came through the concurrent meeting in February, and then when the inter-local agreement came before your board in July, it was adopted, the inter-local agreement, by everybody in August, and so it was established, our program was then established, August 2014, and since then, we have a lot of accomplishments, but we wanted to just bring before you the big ones. We established privacy policies. Because we do investigation and because we have data being submitted, we felt like it was really important to ensure that the personal health information in this community was kept in a confidential manner, that everybody understood what that looked like, so that we wouldn't have any issues with that. We developed the investigation procedures, sent them out to all the partners, and then those partners that may be asked for supporting documentation to an investigation got a copy of it. The EMS Advisory Board, they convene quarterly, our next meeting is in January. The EMS data reports, we've completed four, and then an annual report, and what we decided to do this next time, and this might be new for you, Mr. Driscoll, is we're actually changing our templates, and we're going to start measuring ourselves against national standards, so that we can see, you know, what our system is looking like, and while those may not be the standards of the specific jurisdictions, it gives a starting point to be able to make some long-term decisions. We also feel like it's incredibly important to understand what our partners are doing, and so we have done sit-alongs or ride-alongs with the regional partners, so we have sat in your dispatch centers, all three of us, and then two out of the three of us have already sat on your fire engines nervously, hoping that no scary calls were coming for most of us. But we, you know, we don't feel like we can be effective unless we understand every part of it. The projects that we're currently working on, there's a number of big ones up there. The development of the five-year strategic plan, we had a SWOT analysis done, conducted by Manager Driscoll, which was really beneficial to help kick off the process and allow our community to start working towards that. We're developing Omega protocols, the REMZA franchise response zones. This morning, we had a meeting, and we are this close to having a draft map available. We're updating the multi-casualty incident plan to include those mass gathering, the law that passed ended up being stricter than our regional policies, and so the regional policies that we've had in place for a myriad of years are no longer applicable, and so what we are going to do is put those into the multi-casualty incident plan, so that mitigation efforts are now in there, so that our community continues to be safe when there's large gatherings that are happening, and then a family services center annex, in case there's multi casualties with fatalities, where those families can go to receive services. Again, planning for additional additions to the data report, we're hoping to get hospital outcome information, so that we can start looking at it from the 911 call all the way through hospital disposition, so we're partnering with Northern Nevada Medical Center right now to pilot it, to see what that can look like. And then the last thing that we're working on as a community would be the HeartSafe designation that we're hoping to attain this year. So those are just some of the things. I, again, really appreciate the opportunity to come, and I'm open to any questions that you may have. And I'll just defer to...
Mostly comments. As you know, that I sit as the representative to the District Board of Health, and so I've had the opportunity to be intimately involved in all of this work, and I would not, absolutely would not miss an opportunity to express the gratitude that I have for the work that the city of Sparks has done in particular. So, to City Manager Driscoll, and I have to extend it to City Manager Carey before him, that the city of Sparks has taken a leadership role in moving this forward, to Chief Garrison, and I have to extend it to Chief Flock before him, because we've stayed pretty consistent, even though we've had some transition in our leadership in really taking a significant role in moving a lot of this forward. Ms. Conti and Ms. Dayton and the rest of their team have stepped up and done some very complex work relatively quickly in what is not only a technically complex environment, but a politically complex environment, and I want to recognize their skill in navigating that, because we're moving forward, and there has been progress made, and that's very exciting. I'm thankful for the advisory committee of the city managers and others who meet regularly to solve some of these things, so that we're not doing it here, because it gets, I think it gets solved better at that level, and we get some good solutions. But I'm really excited about the progress that's been made, not to say that we're, not to say that we've achieved perfection yet, there's still much work to be done and some exciting things on the horizon with the Tiburon coming online, with CAD-to-CAD connections between some of our dispatch centers, with vehicle locators, where we'll just continue to get a richness of data, so that the decisions that we're making are informed and based on what's actually happening in the field and not just what people would like us to believe. So gratitude, enthusiasm for what's happening, and some anticipation for some good things to come in the future, but thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'll echo Julia's comments. I thank you very much to everybody involved into it, and I can tell you, you know, 15 years ago, I never thought I'd see the time that, you know, REMZA and the government agencies could have worked together, and I can tell you that the number of calls and complaints I get are falling, you know, they're not, they're not what we used to hear out there. So congratulations, keep up the good work. We're looking forward to, you know, a couple of years down the road, we're going to really get efficient on what we do, so thank you, thank you, Chief, and everybody involved into it.
Thank you.
You know, Chief, I'm sorry, I cut you off, but did you have some comments you needed to make, or?
I did not.
Okay.
I just wanted to sit down here and glow and...
We really appreciate Chief Garrison.
And we appreciate it, do you believe me? Trust me on this one. And thank you, folks, for what you do. Appreciate it.
It's our pleasure.
Anyone else, any comments?
No, we'll have Chief back up there in a little while. Something else.
Christina, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Okay, let's move on to consent items. 8.1 through 8.7, anyone who want to pull one? Mr. Schmidt?
Not want to pull any, I want to make a motion to approve items 8.1, 8.1 through 8.7, with a comment after the second.
Ms. Byby?
Second.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff, Building and Safety Department, you know, you started this program of doing inspections and building permits and stuff with outside contractors instead of going to the table and hiring new people, and, you know, this program's been a success, I appreciate it, and happily to go ahead and continue expanding the program. So thank you. Pass that along.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Byby. Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to general business. Consideration of possible approval of an appointment of one member of the city council to represent the city of Sparks in the Board of Trustees of the Western Regional Water Commission. So let me look at this.
Karen, you want me to explain why you're there?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, I have the third Wednesday, I have three board meetings at the same time, with the RSCBA Finance Committee, I'm the president of the Western Nevada Development District, and this board also. So I've got the Finance Committee moved at the RSCBA, so I just don't have the ability to be at these meetings.
And I'm sorry I didn't bring this up sooner to the council, but one thing I need to explain, Mr. Smith is already on this board, so we can't give him two appointments.
You don't get two votes?
Vote twice?
So the two are left, Mr. Sch...
time with the RSCBA Finance Committee. I'm the president of the Western Nevada Development District and this board also. So I've got the finance committee moved at the RSCBA, so I, I just don't have the ability to be at these meetings.
And I'm sorry I didn't bring this up sooner to the council, but one thing I need to explain, Mr. Smith is already on this board, so he, we can't give him two appointments. To two...
You don't get two votes?
Vote twice?
So the, the two are left, Mr. Schmidt doesn't, is not interested. It, it's something that, it's not time-consuming, we meet maybe three times a year, sometimes four.
He's trying to sell it.
And, you know, I apologize to you ladies, I didn't talk to you about this before, but if someone would step up, it's not a huge commitment and...
My light's on.
Oh, gee. Ms. Reddy?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Charlene Bybee to the Western Regional Water Commission.
Do we have a second? Mr. Schmidt's a second. Okay, Ms. Reddy made the motion, Mr. Schmidt second. All in favor, or let me see, vote.
I'm not voted, so I don't have a choice.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and vote, please. Passage unanimously, thanks. Thanks, Charlene.
Good job. Congratulations.
I don't know anything about water, I guess I'm learning.
You will.
Whole new adventure.
Okay, next is consideration of possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the airport noise panel for the following pool of applicants, and I think Mr. Shockett is the one that I'm asking to be appointed. Any discussion? If not, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Mayor, I support your appointment of Mr. Shockett to the, to the Airport Authority Noise Evacuation Panel.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to appoint David Shockett to the Airport Noise Panel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. And again, I want to apologize to the council that I wasn't more forthcoming on these two agenda items, I kind of lost track, so...
What did that just find?
It did, though, you're right, wrong guy. Some thought, sometimes things just seem to work out right, don't they? Yes, thanks, thanks, Charlene. Nine-point-three, consideration of possible acceptance of the city's comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER for final fiscal year 2015.
Good job. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am here to present the comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFER, for 2015. It was a clean audit. We have a member here, the, the Ida Bailey, partner in charge of the audit, is here in the audience if you have any questions. But the long and the short of it is that it, it was an unmodified, unqualified, used to be called opinion, which is the highest clean opinion, if you will, if we can get. And there were only three findings related to the financial statement and two findings related to our CDBG grant, so it was very clean audit, like I said. And, and I just wanted to take this time right now just to, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the entire financial services department staff. This is a lot of work, not only just to produce this document, which you have a copy, electronic copy of in your, in your packet there, but just all year round, the thousands and thousands of financial transactions that, that are required to produce something like this. So just many, many, many man-hours and we have a wonderful staff. So I just wanted to take time publicly to thank the entire IT department, to the accountants, to the budget folks, to our accounting technicians, everybody involved, wonderful staff. It's an honor to lead such a dedicated group. So with that, I didn't want to get into a, a, a lot of the presentation of what's in the CAFER, like, it's a rather thick one. If you really are interested, we can start with page one, but I don't think so.
Why don't you start with?
But the highlight is just that. And usually we have to file a, a, a plan of corrective action if there are any, any compliance issues. This year, we could have actually done this under consent because there weren't any such issues, no compliance issues were found. Just a couple of the findings, five findings, honestly, are very small, so there really aren't any issues to, to address at that formal letter, level that we would have to send to the Department of Taxation. So with that, really, that's all I wanted to, to provide as far as a, as a commentary and I'm here to answer questions. Or Kristen, again, from, Ida Bailey is here as well.
Questions? Mr. Smith?
No, not many questions.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jeff, good job. I can't argue that there comes nothing back wrong with it, so congratulations to, to staff and, and for all their hard work for the year. Comment that came out of our workshop that you provided when I asked for a complete breakdown of all of our liabilities in one simple spreadsheet or two that everybody can take a look at. I'd really like to see that as become a semi-annual out to the council. I don't know if the rest of the council got it or not, I think they all got it. Because I think it's really good to see where all of our liabilities sit on out there. You know, what's, what's happening? Where's our, our bonds at? How much do we have in, you know, in post-employee retirement benefits and things like that? So I, I appreciate you doing that and I'd like to see it as a permanent thing. I, I can't go on to why I'm going to support the, the acceptance of the thing, I can't go on with my, without my yearly statement. And that is that I think that we're in violation of the Oxbie, help me out.
The Sarbanes-Oxley?
The Sarbanes-Oxley Act that says that we can't go more than five years with the same accountant. Nothing against Armstrong, we just have recommendations from National League of Cities that that's what we should be looking at. You know, I, 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 we've had the same accountant for 25, 24 years now, 25 years, something like that. And, you know, attorneys overrule me, that's okay. I just think that, you know, we need to be looking at things like that, so, but I support you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I move to accept the CAFER report for 2014-15 as presented and authorize the financial services director to distribute it to interested parties as necessary.
Ms. Reddy?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Reddy. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Have a great team there. All right, nine-point-four is a first reading.
Bill number 2700, a general ordinance rezoning real property owned by Walmart Realty Company from C1 neighborhood commercial to C2 general commercial for a parcel totaling approximately 4.25 acres in size located at 2050 Pyramid Ways, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, this is a first reading of bill number 2700. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, January 11th, 2016. Okay, let's move on to public hearing items. Ten-point-one, public hearing, consideration of possible approval of resolution number 3288, authorizing medium-term obligations in an amount of up to $20 million to finance flood control and drainage projects, directing the officers, officers of the city to forward materials to the Department of Taxation of the state of Nevada, declaring the intent to reimburse the cost of the project from proceeds of these such medium-term obligations and providing effective date thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up to the direction we received, a city council meeting back in September to pursue financing options to finish the North Truckee Drain Project. So we did that, we went out there and kind of beat the bushes a little bit and see what kind of market we're dealing with and what kind of a vehicle would be the best suited for this project. And, and this is what our team has come up with as far as a, to pursue. So with your approval, what we're seeking today, this is the initial authorization to pursue that process. The final issuing, or the final approval of issuing these bonds isn't today, you're going to get another swing at this when we actually do the ordinance for the actual bond sale. So this is the, the up to, so the numbers that you're seeing in here are quite conservative. And we do that for a purpose because our next step after, after approval today would be to go to the State Department of Taxation and, and basically prove to them that we can cover it with our revenues and, and start going through that process. This would be a, what we're, what we're seeking to do is a general obligation issuance, but the, the intent and the expectation is that this would be paid for from the flood fee from, that's paid by the sewer cus, sewer customers of the city of Sparks. So when you're, when you're seeing in here up to $20 million with, with an interest rate up to, these are kind of like the, the worst-case scenarios, if you will. We expect it to be quite a bit less than that. It's a little bit hard to say, we're going to get into a pretty uncertain interest rate environment here very soon. So it's a little bit unknown how that's going to play out. So, but we're still looking at this being as fairly conservative. We'll see, right? It's one of those things, we'll see what the future holds when we get there. But, so, so the process is, again, we're, we're, this is just seeking initial approval for the, to authorize us to proceed with that up to $20 million. It'll be something less, I'm sure. And we're going to come back to you, the, the schedule is in late, I'm sorry, early February for the bond sale ordinance, and that's actually when the bonds would be issued. And we'll tighten up the actual balance at that time. And then the close, the close of the escrow will probably happen in March, is what the expectations are. So with that, I'm here to answer questions and it is a public hearing.
You know, I've never noticed you guys to be conservative before.
I know, it's just not in our nature.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jeff, thanks for, you know, getting right on this and getting going and you answered one of my questions that you feel we're going to be able to roll by spring, mid-spring, early summertime on the project. So are we able to put it turbo? Because I, I believe our cash flow for this item is, is a little over $3 million a year and our payment's going to be $2.5 million. Can we turbo this or we get paid?
Yes, in fact, thank you for bringing that up. I mentioned, I, I forgot to mention that, I wanted to. We're, we're seeking a call provision around five years.
Okay.
A medium-term obligation is an up to 10 years, so we have the flexibility to go up to 10 years in this issuance. It's not a long-term issuance, we're not looking for a 20-year, you know, more than that. This is a medium-term obligation, which by definition is 10 years or less, but we're actually going to seek a, a call provision at five years.
Okay.
And we're, because to your point is exactly right, this, this is a pretty consistent generation of about $2.9 to $3 million of revenue. And in all likelihood, the, the debt service will be far less than $2.5 million, so we want to pay this off as soon as we can.
Great, I, I appreciate that because I think it's, it's important, you know, that I've, I've concentrated on the debt and this is one that, you know, and I just want to take a moment for the citizens of Sparks to understand that this sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, 10 years ago when we started with this project, it was a $100 million project. We've cash flowed the first $21 million, I think it's 21, 25 million out of the, you know, we, we didn't take out a loan. The city of Sparks cash flowed that and paid cash for it, so we saved all the expenses and we were able to cut the cost of this project down to under $45 million now, or $50 million instead of $100 million 10 years ago. And this is the only thing we're going to do for it, and it's going to be paid off in five years. And, you know, the, the ability to get this flood control done now versus waiting six more years till we have the money in the bank is, you know, is, is, it's reducing our liability. You know, I, if in a perfect world, I would like it to have been done yesterday so the upcoming storms that are coming through the next couple of weeks, you know, we, we've got some comfort involved into it, but, you know, we don't live in a perfect world and so is not there. So, you know, this project has been handled phenomenally by staff and by, you know, the finance to get it done without any bonding or anything else like that. And I appreciate you getting on the, on the, on the stick and make this happen so we can get this project rolling and at least take some of the flood concerns off from downtown and industrial area. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Jeff, I agree with Mr. Schmidt. This is, we've got three-quarters of project and it, it doesn't connect anything until we put in the last part. So I think we need to bond for this and also that this bond will actually revert to the flood project once we, if that continues to move forward. And they'll take over the finances and will, the burden of the 541 a month will go away, although there may be a fee in, in the place. So this is a long time coming, we need to get it done and we need to get it done as soon as possible, so good, good work on this, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 3288, authorizing the issuance of medium-term obligations up to $20 million to help finance flood control under each projects.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 10.1, resolution number 3288. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously and a comment from me about flood, you know, we've got a flood committee and we've got three entities on that flood committee, we've got a lot of people talking about doing stuff for the flood. Well, guess what? Sparks is the only one that's doing anything paid for by the citizens of Sparks. So, you know, I want to thank the council for looking forward, as we usually do in Sparks, to see what may happen and funding something for the floods because we know we're going to have floods in this area. So I hope there's a couple other entities that may be watching today that'll take heed and want to do something similar to what we're doing, doing something for flood control in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
10.2, second reading, public hearing, consideration of possible action on bill number 2699 and ordinance amending chapter 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code to remove the requirement for certificate of qualification for any person who labors at the trade of plumbing or electrician in the city of Sparks and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Mr. Martini?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One second, I'm sorry. Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to make a statement before we address item 10.2. I need to disclose that my nephew Mac Bybee is the executive director of ABC. Because of this personal relationship, today, our legal counsel has advised me that I am to abstain from voting on item 10.2. I will be here to listen to the presentations but will not be commenting and have been advised legally to abstain from voting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we can fix that, Charlene, Mr. Bybee's fired, okay? He's no longer the director of ABC, so you can... I mean, it's only fair, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Charlene, go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, John Martini, city engineer. As the council will recall, on October 26, Mayor Martini asked the city manager to have staff take a look at this section of title 15. Staff did. As you will recall, I sat before you when I reported back saying it appeared to be an archaic portion of our code. To staff's knowledge, it had not been utilized or enforced in, in at least recent history. And then it had been on the books since 1992 via ordinance number 1760. In my duties as the manager of the Building and Safety Division, I took a look at the ordinance and council may be wondering why my proposed amendment is a complete strike of the ordinance as shown. I found a lot of perplexing issues in this ordinance. Certainly, whenever an ordinance calls something unlawful to labor, you, you take note because you are breaking the law if you do this. Secondarily, I found it curious that the existing ordinance does not have a provision for what happens when there is a violation. So as we sit here today, these, a person violating this ordinance would be issued a ticket subject to a misdemeanor, would have to go to our municipal court to pay the fine. There is no other provision in this ordinance for what happens. Third, I found it perplexing and somewhat awkward that the person responsible for issuing the certification is our building official. I do not know why it should be our building official's duty to ascertain whether a member performing a trade is qualified to do so. Our building official is here to make sure that the codes that we adopt, we bring them to you through ordinance for adoption, you know, whether it be the International Building Code, the Residential Code, any of the codes that we've adopted, it is his job to make sure that any proposed project for a building permit that comes in to the city for review and, and permit is done to those codes. That's his job. As well as I mentioned to the council at, when we last spoke, that the job of our building inspectors is to make sure that what is being built in the field is in substantial compliance with what was approved with the permit. That is where the safety comes from. It's twofold. We have adopted codes that their intent is to ensure safety and then our building inspector's job, once the permit is issued, is to review the work in the field and make sure it conforms to what has been approved. There is another item I'd like to bring up that concerns me a little bit. You've heard testimony before you today that we are removing licensure. We are not removing licensure. What? We are not removing licensure. What exists in our title today is certificate of qualification. I want the council to remember, building permits, for the most part, there are a couple of circumstances where they can be issued differently, are issued to licensed contractors. And this is another point that I find perplexing as well. You will hear, well, that to get my haircut, it has to be done by someone who has a license. To have a license in the state of Nevada, it has to be through an approved board, a state board. There's a state board of architecture, state board of professional engineers, state board of cosmetologists, doctors have one. I can find no state board, nor can I find language in NRS or NAC that requires plumbers and electricians to be certified through a state program, state of Nevada. The Nevada Board of Plumbers, as I researched them, that has testified here before you, they operate as a, a nonprofit organization whose intention, and I think it's very noble and a good one, is to raise the level of their industry. However, as an organization, as someone having to manage the process that our ordinances have, um, the certification as it sits today is done by our building official, yet there is no state agency to work with. If we have an issue with a licensed contractor, we can go to the state board, uh, of lic, of contractors, the contractors' board, to work and issue out. In this case, I don't know where that, that opportunity exists. For these reasons, what I brought to the council was, let's strike it and get rid of it. I don't know how to fix it. Subsequent to these meetings, we have had a proposal made, um, by outside organizations for proposed amended language. I am reviewing that language now. I still have a lot of questions. I'm not ready to bring that amended language to you today. So the item before you remains as it I originally brought it. It is simply requesting your consideration to remove this in its entirety. That concludes what I have to present. I think there's a lot of folks behind me that would still like to talk. I will be, uh, available for questions, should you have them.
Questions for John, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, John, I want to kind of, um...
Seeing on one gap that I see in this, this, uh, issue here, um, you talked about certification, that, that we're not responsible for certification of the employees. We're only responsible to make sure that the permit holder has a license by the state of Nevada to do that work.
Correct. The one that we have issued the building permit to.
I, I've heard two things, two possible scenarios, that our present code tells us that we're supposed to run the, the school, the classes, take the, administer the test, um, to be able to do the certification. And then I've heard that we can accept certifications from outside agencies.
Correct.
Do we, do we, which one is that our code tells us that?
I believe our code allows for...
We do both.
Allows for both.
Allows for both. Who certifies a school? In other words, if Mike and Joe opens up a school tomorrow for, you know, uh, plumbing teaching, who's responsible to certify the school, that their criteria, their, their curriculum they're going to do is meeting the requirements of a certification program?
Uh, in the absence of state guidelines, I cannot answer that question.
So would that fall on the city of Sparks, you know, to certify the school?
Uh, that, Councilman Schmidt, Doug Thornley with the city attorney's office, for the record. Is your question directed towards who approves apprenticeship programs, or, or a school, or are we talking about the same thing?
Yeah, I, well, okay, whatever the program is, whatever that allows a certification for the, for electrician and plumber, you know, um, can I do that online? Can I, can I go on to Mike and Joe's apprenticeship program online and say that, you know, I've done all this stuff, can you give me my certificate, to issue the certificate? Who's, who is in charge of, like, if I wanted to start a school, I have to go to the, to the, to the board of schools for the state of Nevada to get my certificate to run a school, that I'm meeting certain criteria?
I'm not, I'm not certain. I know entirely the answer to your question, but apprenticeship programs, by and large, are an agreement between an employee and employer. And the, and the minimum requirements for a state-approved apprenticeship program are, are set out in chapter 610 of the, of the Nevada revised statutes.
So if I, you know, if, if two people goes out and starts an apprenticeship program, they have to comply, who is responsible for checking out their certificate, is complying to that program?
There's a, there's a state board that oversees apprenticeship programs in the state of Nevada.
So they oversee the schools, they, or they oversee the programs, but they don't take and provide the certificates for the employees?
I am not certain as to what the answer to that specific question is.
I mean, I, because I've been told that there is no certification in the state, and that, you know, the, whoever runs the apprenticeship program uses a certificate, but there's nobody that requires, the state doesn't require you to have a certificate to be an employee. You brought up hairdressers. That, there isn't a, a requirement that if you're going to be a hairdresser in the state, you will have a certificate from the state that you've met minimum qualifications to be...
There's an important distinction there, and, and it's that it's not, um, a certificate. And I, I only make that correction because there's an important distinction between the certificate that is presently on the books of the city and the actual license that is issued by the state. And so the corollary in this case would be the contractor's license for electrical or plumbing work that is issued by the state. Now, the employees, uh, as you, as you reference them in, in the sense that there's a cosmetology license, those employees are required to have the license from the state.
As employee, not as an owner, as employee.
As an employee, not as an, as an owner, or, or as a, but they are, you know, effectively the general contractor in that sense. Here, the, the contractor's license is the equivalent of, of the cosmetology license. However, the employees are not required to hold their own licenses.
So tell me what employee's certificates that any local government issues in this, in the state of Nevada. Any local government is actually involved in issuing, or certifying, or requesting a certificate, you know, of an employee? I understand the difference between a contractor and employee. That's a very big difference. You know, as an employee, who requires those, what government agency requires those certificates?
In this sense, Councilman Schmidt, Clark County does. Uh, I believe the city of Reno is, is working on it. Our rough equivalent in our code is, is probably work cards, that I don't even know if we're issuing those anymore. But they essentially, they didn't certify necessarily competency in any given arena. It was more that the police department had run a criminal background check, and...
And that, that was the one we discontinued in 2008, because it was duplication of effort. They were doing it already to the state, and then we were losing $30 for every card, or whatever the number was that we were issuing. We're losing that money when the state's already doing the work. So that, that was the last program in 2008 that we, I don't have anybody who, a local government that issued a certificate. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Anyone else? Excuse me. Uh, Mr. Smith, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one question I have, over and over again, people are referring to the certifications as, as licenses, and they are not licenses.
They are not.
So when they say we're pulling licenses out of the city of Spark, we're not, we are not doing any such thing. The contractor has the business license, or anybody doing business has a business license.
The contractor has both a business license and a state-issued contractor's license.
Right. But the certification just says you've been through the school, and if somebody wants to hire you, you've got this certification.
To my knowledge, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ed.
So, Mr. Martini, do, do we require that have a set of plumbing drawings when we are issuing a permit?
Um, for commercial and industrial, absolutely, plumbing drawings. For residential, no.
Okay. We require electrical drawings?
Yes.
On both sides?
Uh, to my knowledge, uh, industrial and commercial. Uh, and I think there is minimum electrical on, on, uh, residential.
It just occurs to me that if we have drawings, it's easier for our inspectors to inspect.
They, they do, in fact, inspect the drawings.
Right. But if, we know it's supposed to be a three-inch line, and there's a two-inch line, the inspector can look at the drawing and say, hey, it's, you got the wrong one.
Or refer to minimum code?
Correct.
And say, for residents, it's...
That's just something I needed to clarify in my own mind. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. We have quite a few speakers today, so, uh, please, uh, say everything you need to say as quickly as possible. If you're agreeing with someone else and you don't have another point, you know, you can say, I agree with them, or I oppose, or I, I am for, whatever. And the other thing, please be respectful of other people's opinions. Uh, everybody has an opinion. They're all, uh, you know, okay to have an opinion, so please be respectful. And, uh, I, I don't want this to get personal, okay? This is not a personal issue. This is a business issue. So, uh, if somebody has an opinion, don't be banging on them because of their personal opinion. This is business, not personal. Please. And let's, uh, move on as quickly as we can, okay? Having said that, here we go. Jack, where is it?
I'm Jack Marasik.
I'm sorry. Come on down, Jack. And everyone, you have three minutes. You can use three minutes, or you don't have to use three minutes?
It wasn't my intention to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the council people, but, uh, I just want to say that I'm in opposition for removal of the licensing.
Okay.
Brief. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, LJ Savage?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ira Hansen. He always wants to speak.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Actually, what I want to talk about, since I only have three minutes, I want to, when I contacted Mr. Driscoll about, uh, whether or not you guys were in compliance with the NRSs, he indicated your legal staff and said, yes. I felt that that was an error, so I contacted the Legislative Council Bureau. And if there's one thing that the city wants to be sure of, that is, they want to make sure they are complying with the Nevada revised statutes. So, uh, I just got the legal opinion back probably an hour and a half before this meeting was to start. I sent it to Adam Mayberry, who I believe distributed it to all of you. I don't know if you had a chance to review it. So real quickly, I want to go through it. According to the Nevada Legislative Council Bureau, they say you guys are in not, you are not in compliance with the state law. You were supposed to follow through certain things, and I'll get into that. Here's exactly what I said, uh, or what they said. Uh, in compliance, oh, I'm sorry, that's the city of Reno one. You have asked whether the city of Sparks may adopt a certain ordinance without complying with the requirements of NRS 237 030 to 237 1150. For the reasons explained below, it is the opinion of this office that the city may not do so. You, in other words, what you're doing, trying to vote on today, you haven't followed the, the law. Uh, the provisions of NRS 237 inclusive establish a process whereby the adoption of certain rules must be preceded by notices to businesses. Now, as the mayor just pointed out, this is a business decision. This isn't personal. It's a business decision. What is the, uh, what is the NRS required? Uh, LCB goes on. It is our opinion that the city must comply with those requirements before the Sparks City Council determines whether or not to adopt the bill. And in conclusion, they write, uh, accordingly, it is our opinion that before taking any further action to adopt the ordinance that issue here, the city of Sparks must complete the process required by the NRS 237 inclusive. Uh, we express no opinion as to whether the proposed ordinance will in fact, quote, impose a direct or significant economic burden upon a business, or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. That determination must be made by the city in accordance with the statutory process. Now, what I thought was interesting is, the city of Reno is going through the same thing, and I just today, from Dan Hawley, got the, the city of Reno ordinance. But attached to their ordinance is a notice of intent to act upon a regulation. In compliance, this is what the city of Reno said, in compliance with the NRS 237, local governments are to notify trade associations or owners and officers of businesses that are likely to be affected by the adoption of the proposed rule, that you may submit data or arguments to the governing body or its designee if you believe the adoption of the referenced rule will either A, impose a direct and significant economic burden upon business, or B, directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. As Mr. Schmidt pointed out, there are a bunch of questions that could have been addressed, had the, the city council followed the NRS prior to putting this as an action item on a second reading. So my suggestion would be to make sure, since this hasn't been enforced in at least 20 years, according to your own staff, that you delay this to ensure that you, you want to make absolute best efforts to comply with the Nevada revised statutes, because there is in fact a difference of opinion on this. What is the rush? I would strongly urge this council to not vote on this today, but to in fact postpone it, to ensure that you're in complete compliance with the Nevada revised statutes. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Nice. Thank you, Mr. Hansen. And, and, uh, what's your name? Chad. We'll address this later on, uh, when we have our own discussion after the public hearing.
We will.
Okay. So let me put that aside, make sure I don't forget. Okay. Chris Doris?
Absolutely.
Chris Doris?
Yeah, I just wanted, because I was in opposition of it.
Okay, thank you. Bill Taggart? Welcome, Bill.
My name's Bill Taggart. I'm a resident of Sparks and a retired electrician. Uh, all I wanted to say basically is that licensing is, I think, pretty important for doing the work of plumbers and electricians. I went through a four-year apprenticeship, and now they're going through a five-year apprenticeship. So it sounds like, you know, the requirement, or the way the thing was read, is a little bit skewed, and maybe needs to be redone, redone somewhat. But I think every contractor should be required to have, at least have, their workers have an apprenticeship ticket or something that shows that they're gonna go to school and learn this trade, or they have a license by the state. So, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Brian Reader? Welcome, Brian.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Brian Reader, with the Nevada Associated Mechanical Contractors and the Nevada Associated General Contractors. Uh, Mayor Martini, city council members and staff, we truly appreciate the time and effort you are putting into this matter. I know there's a lot of important issues in front of you. Um, and we believe it is important that Sparks maintain an up-to-date, uh, minimum requirements for individuals installing plumbing and electrical systems. But we are concerned that the bill you have before you today, bill number 2699, instead of updating the Spark code, removes the minimum standards for quality of workmanship completely. I want to emphasize, this is not a union contractor versus non-union contractor issue. Sadly, that's been the narrative. This isn't even about a section of code that has not been applied, because while saying it has not been applied in 23 years is a great talking point, it's not true. We know for a fact that this has been used when needed. This is really about what's best for the citizens of the city of Sparks. The city of Sparks residents deserve to expect the individuals installing and working on their plumbing, gas, and electrical systems have the minimum qualifications and understand the code. If you simply delete all the requirements, and anybody with a pulse can be a plumber or an electrician, you remove any assurance for those citizens. I'm talking about the 80-year-old grandma who has a leaky toilet, and she pulls out the Yellow Pages and calls the first plumber she sees. Under this bill, that plumber could send anybody over. Those calls typically don't require a building permit, which means the city of Sparks inspector would never have the opportunity to catch a mistake. The average Spark resident is not going to ask the individual who shows up if they're certified, if they're qualified, if they know the code, but they do expect it. Removing the minimum standard removes that layer of protection. Now, the debate over this issue has a lot to do with inexperienced employees, those who do not have experience to earn a journeyman certification. And we are not saying the individuals who have not gone through an apprentice program are unskilled at all. We're not saying that. If an individual logs the necessary experience to earn a journeyman card, we do not have a problem with that, and we never have. What we don't want is inexperienced employees who do not understand the code out there on their own, installing and working on plumbing, gas, and electrical systems. That's when things can get really bad really fast. Economic forecasters are telling us the Sparks will experience significant growth over the next several years, and we're all excited about that. We're going to need skilled workers. And good contractors will take the time to ensure that those workers are qualified, or that a qualified individual is supervising the work. But there are bad actors who will take advantage if there are zero minimum standards and hire anyone to do what is considered some of the most complex and dangerous work in the construction industry. I think we all agree the Sparks code could be updated, but by completely eliminating all minimum standards is not, we, we don't believe that's the way to go. We just ask you to simply vote no today, or extend this decision, and let the contractors, the developers, the building inspectors, and most importantly, the homeowners, have the chance to find common ground. I appreciate the time to speak. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Mr. Lawson?
Brian, uh, you mentioned that this code has been used. Can you, and staff says it hasn't been used. Can you guys get back to me with dates, times, and people that this has been used on?
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, uh, somebody's not telling me the whole story.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I would be happy to do that. Um, I believe, uh, it was used on the Nugget Tower recently, and, uh, what was the Silver Club, turning that into the, uh...
Building officials.
Yes. Yes.
Need to see times and dates and whatever we got. Much information as possible, so I'd like to follow up.
Thank you. Dan Tetro. Welcome, Dan. Don, I'm sorry. I'm Italian, you know, I can't read very well, so.
I don't write very well, so. All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for your time. First, I just want to, my name is Don Tetro, I'm here representing the Builders Association of Northern Nevada. First, builders, we support education, safety, and quality. Where we differ with the opposition is, we believe Nevada's a right-to-work state, and we don't believe enforced memberships to union and quasi-union associations. But I do want to say thank you for taking the first steps in removing this unnecessary red tape, and I hope the final steps are taken today to eliminate this bureaucratic bloat. The greatest case for removal of the apprenticeship journeyman requirements is the obvious fact that in 23 years, the City of Sparks has never needed to utilize this tool. In the thousands of electrical and plumbing permits issued, there's never been a cry by anyone to enforce these burdens on employees. Enforcing apprenticeship journeyman requirements does nothing for homeowners, residents of Sparks, and it only restricts jobs, growth, and opportunity. It only improves the bottom line of a few associations who are promoting versions of this around town. The opponents of common sense and the removal of these provisions are well-funded, well-organized, and well-opinioned, but they lack facts. The fact is, there isn't a number or statistic showing apprentice work is better than non-apprentice work, union versus non-union work is better or worse. The only fact is, there is no connection between safety and quality that can be made between those who participate in union apprenticeships and those who don't. Enforcement of these regulatory restrictions on employment only complicate the job of building inspectors, who should be focusing on the work product, not employee titles. Inspectors should be inspecting according to permits, and plans, and code. Manipulation of government policy on the opinion of a few well-funded groups is a terrible precedent, and I applaud this council for standing up against big leg labor and big government for small businesses in this region. Let's stop protecting the fiefdoms of the well-funded at the cost of liberty and freedom of our local residents and workforce. Those plumbers with a few employees doing great work don't deserve to be bullied because they don't use a union business matrix. Thank you for standing up for small businesses and the hard-working members of our community. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
And I see there's still some of you outside there. We do have seats inside, if you want to come on in, just letting you know. Jacob Haas. Welcome, Jacob.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Jacob Haas, and I'm here representing IBW Local 401. And the first thing, this is not a union or a non-union issue. This is strictly a safety issue. If you look at plumbing and electrical, yes, you can see a set of plants, plans, you look at those before, but when you go in and inspect those, do you see every connection, every part, the wires already in the pipe? Everything what we do is actually hidden behind walls, it's hidden where you can't see it once it's installed. All you see is the outcome. You can't see electricity flowing through the wires. These are very critical issues when we're talking about safety. These can kill you, kill your family, your friends. It's really important with safety that the people that install these know how and what they're doing and the code requirements with this. So I, we stand in objection to eliminating this. Yes, we do believe that it needs some refined and tuning, and we just recommend that you vote against it and take it back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dylan Gallagher?
I just, here to oppose removing it out of code.
Okay, thank you. Gloria Alanco. Lou?
Yeah, Lou.
Welcome, Lou.
My friends call me Lou, you can call me Lou.
Can I call you Lou then?
You sure can.
Thanks, Lou. Appreciate it.
I'm here about, my name is Lou Alanco, and I'm here about the item 10.2 concerning certification of plumbers and electricians. I represent homeowners, anyway. After reading statements by Jay Carter Witt, owner of Silverwing Development, I decided to speak out. I own a Silverwing house, and I have to disagree when he says that certification would, quote, "cost his company massive losses because he could lose experienced workers." I say hogwash. If he had had more of those experienced workers building my house, I wouldn't be here today. Shortly after my Silverwing house closed on July 29th, 2005, I requested a second walk-through because of issues discovered after moving in, over 30 items on the list. In December, I submitted a warranty service request for the outstanding items, and Mr. Witt's experienced workers finally completed the work, and 14 months later, I signed off. On 7/18/2006, I paid for a home inspection. I figured if there's so much wrong that I can see, I wonder if there's more that I can't see. On 7/29, I submitted a warranty service request to repair six items from the report, including safety issues. These are issues that I would have never known about had I not paid $300 for a home inspection in 2006. Eight months later, the work was finally completed. In the meantime, there were other problems, a roof leak in the attic, frozen drain lines, and a broken pipe leading to the street. I don't mean to single out Mr. Witt, but he seems to be spearheading the campaign to get Sparks to remove the certification requirement for electricians and plumbers, and to stop Reno from reinstating it. When developers like Mr. Witt say certification will cost his company massive losses, we should realize the ones who will suffer massive losses are homeowners, who get stuck with expensive repair bills down the road. I'm requesting that you not only require notification of plumbers and electricians, but that you also enforce the requirement. Not enforcing the requirement in the past is no excuse for removing the requirement now. I repeat, not enforcing the requirement in the past is no excuse for not, for removing the requirement now. As we move into a new era of growth in Sparks and Reno, developers may be tempted to cut corners. One area they shouldn't cut is public safety. Please do the right thing and certify your plumbers and electricians. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Okay, folks, it's not a, it's not a contest here, who's right and who's wrong. Please, no, no clapping and so on and so forth. Like I said, everybody has an opinion. Fine, if you want to agree with them, put a card in and come up and say you agree with them. Please, we want to move on with this. Mike Sargent?
Hi, my name is Mike Sargent, and I'm the owner of Sparks Electrical, and I am in favor of removing the requirement. First of all, I must say that it's an honor, again, for the electrical to be associated with the plumbers, because it would be different if I was associated with roofers, or framers, or stucco, or all the other trades that you're gonna certify. So in addition, my company already has layers, I'm regulated by the Nevada State Contractors Board. My insurance companies, general liability, workman's comp, don't really allow me to do, or allow me to perform in work that can get turned down, and my attorneys definitely tell me, Mike, do the right thing. So I already have enough layers as an employer. Since I've been here and owned the company for 17, 18 years, and been around the City of Sparks for 30 years, I would say that the City of Sparks, if it was the pass, would have a problem with the inspector showing up on the job and possibly closing the job or fining employees. I don't know that that's the place of the inspector, maybe the time should be spent on the inspection itself. In addition, I believe that from a city point, possibly, it could cause, could cause, and I say may, a labor shortage, possibly job stoppages, but it's also not dealing with the fact that if it does expand, what's gonna happen if travelers come to my company? In addition, the main reason I'm here is to protect not only the employees I've had in the past, the employees I have now, and the employees I have in the future. I, I truly believe that there's a combination of employees, the ones that can be on the ladders, 12, 13 feet in the air, you have your other combination, the ones that are mathematical, and not everyone that's been in my business over the last 18 years is mathematical. And I, at this point, I would like to say that I think there's enough layers in place for not just the electricians and plumbers, but I just think that it's time, possibly, that I'm done talking about it.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Rowe?
Craig?
Craig?
How about Craig Rowe?
What's his name?
Craig?
Yes, I can't read, Craig.
It's only the third time I've done that, so.
Mayor, I'm here in support of your position.
You know, I, I've been involved in this very heavily, as I think a lot of you know, in Reno, where this whole thing got started. And it's interesting to me, we, we had a, we had a study done, that we spent several weeks with a university and an economic, an economic, those studies to look at the economy and what will this, what this will do for the economy. Not only the economy, but, you know, they also looked at, at studies to determine whether or not union or non-union labor, whether or not there was, there was any.
Real difference that they could tell. But the interesting thing is, is I've asked the, the opponents, or the, the people that are in support of, of having these restrictions, I've asked them numerous times, please provide us with some empirical data supporting all the claims we hear. We hear all the claims of, of safety issues, of, of, of quality issues, of all of these problems that we constantly hear about. So we're trying to create a situation where we have, where we, we have certificates, or we have some sort of way of trying to qualify these employees because of these theoretical problems that we seem to have, yet nobody can produce any information to us to support that. But we have created a lot of information in support of what the economic problems and issues of, of, of trying to enforce these types of regulations will, will incur. And so in the end, I just say, please, if there's some, if somebody can provide that we have a serious problem, or we have a problem here, then please provide it. Without that, I'm, I'm struggling trying to figure out why we're all here discussing this issue. And, and I am, I am in support of your decision to, to remove this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Craig. Mr. Nepper? Peter Kruger, Peter Kruger, holy crap. I'm sorry.
Mayor, Mayor Martini, members of the council, Peter Kruger here with Capital Partners today, representing the Nevada Manufactured Home Alliance. These are the, this is a statewide trade association that represents dealers of manufactured home. Need to, I think, review that manufactured homes are the entry-level homes for many, many of our citizens. They're a house that is factory-built, and in that sense, it comes pre-wired, it comes pre-plumped, and there are four connections that are made on the job site. We are in support of your action to eliminate the unused and untested ordinance that has stood for so many years. Manufacturing housing has been exempt because it's, it's regulated by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and we also have a state division of, of manufactured housing that, that oversee many of these issues. So that we are here in support, and that should the council decide to go forward, as we are requesting in the neighboring jurisdiction, that manufacturing housing be excluded from any requirements that would require apprentice plumbing, apprentices or journeyman for plumbers and electricians. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. And it's not like, it's not people that I haven't known for a long time, right, Peter?
Yes, sir.
Doki Guy?
That would be Dory Guy.
And I know you too, for crying out loud.
I'm sorry.
Dory Guy?
That's me. I happen to be the chair of your home and renovation too.
I know that. That's what I'm saying, Dory.
I'm a little slow getting up here.
Thanks, Dory.
Mayor Martini and council members, my name is Dory Guy, and I represent nothing more than a citizen of, of Sparks. I've been a homeowner here for 30-odd years, so I know a little bit about what's going on in Sparks. First of all, I'm a little shocked, not shocked, but yeah, I guess I am shocked that this hasn't been imposed in the past, this particular amendment. I, I know from my own personal experience in purchasing a home, that it took seven years and a lawsuit to get everything completed, that, that should have been completed when I did my walkthrough. As a homeowner, I am considering the fact that these people aren't certified or have experience really bothers me. And I think, bottom line on this, I think, is financial. They don't want to pay either a union wage or a living wage to that person because they're certified, and that really bothers me a lot. I mean, come on, people. Our unions are here for a purpose. I know it's not supposed to be a union issue, but, you know, they are here so that individuals are paid a living wage and can support their family. I appreciate you allowing me to comment, and as a, and I, I am commenting strictly as a, a resident and a homeowner here in Sparks. Thank you.
Thanks, Dory.
Happy holidays, too.
Same to you, dear. Scott Fullerton. I know I didn't follow that one up.
Scott Fullerton, I am up here speaking on behalf of, or as a resident of the City of Sparks and as a member of the Operating Engineers Local Number Three. First, I would recommend that you vote in opposition to this. I, I don't believe, with the number of bills that were introduced in the legislature over the past decade on construction defects, that we want to eliminate a tool that would eliminate these. As a resident in the City of Sparks, I do feel comfortable knowing that we have these regulations in place to make sure what I purchase here is up to standard. Second, I've heard all these comments that this rule hasn't been enforced. I do represent the City of Sparks employees as well, and those inspectors have used this as a tool. It's a certification or qualification to make sure that the people that are installing these electrical lines and this plumbing understand the codes themselves. If you don't have that certification, that's a giveaway that we need to investigate this even further. It's a tool for these individuals to do their job, to make sure that everything in this city is up to code. The fact that these certifications are out there is no different than any other job description that the City of Sparks imposes on its own employees, or, or other jobs in that matter, in that, in that nature. Bottom line is, is the certification means a better wage for an individual. Is this a union, non-union issue? Not necessarily, it's a wage issue. The better educated these people are, the better they get paid. So following up on that, I would recommend that the, that the council vote against this, or this, this bill, or this proposal, and, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rudy Viola? Welcome, Rudy.
How you all doing today?
Good.
How's Sarah doing?
And Ned on?
Hi, I own the Lariat Motel. In 2011, we had a fire in the hotel. I was down in LA helping my parents around their house, and I had to fly. and I had to fly back here because of the fire. And the fire was contained pretty much to one room because of the one, one-inch plasterboard. So once we got in there, started fixing things up, we looked at some of the wiring, but it was due to, because we had a licensed, certified electrician that came in there. He pointed out some wiring that was installed after the building was built by probably someone that was uncertified. And if that fire got into that wiring, it would have been a lot worse because it would have, uh, transferred some of that fire to the other rooms. You know, being it was confined to the one room, that only smoke damage occurred to two other rooms out of the, the ten units that are in there. But, uh, what my point is, i- if it wasn't for that extra plaster that was on that wall, we could have had a lot more damage if that extra un, you know, un, I would say unqualified, not up-to-cold wiring, got burnt, it would have got into the fuse boxes, and we would have had, probably the building would have been really destroyed. And, uh, pretty much what went on was being it, being it was confined, we were down to a little over about forty thousand's worth of damage. And I put another seventy thousand into the building to, to make improvements, too. So I, I strictly think we should keep the certification of our plumbers and electricians in our city. My dad was a certified, um, welder, and he always appreciated that, that certificate. And when, when he passed away, I was able to go through his stuff, and I found that certification that he, he used to talk about. And a lot of the men and women that go to these classes to take this and get that certificate, that little piece of paper means a great deal to all of them. So I'd like to thank you for the time, and please, please don't remove that certification. Thank you.
Randy Cannell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for the opportunity to speak before you. Uh, I'd come in originally to speak on several items, one being maybe was to do with, uh, speaking of the efforts of how this goes against everything EDON, Build Nevada, Reno Sparks Charter Schools, Truckee Meadows Community College, Western Nevada Community College, the other thing they're doing to improve the quality of the workforce in the area to attract more businesses this way. Eliminating certi- certifications is one way of getting rid of that. Want to talk about skilled craftsmen that have come to build this area and made this a community where companies want to move here, but to see the only downfall is being unskilled future labor force. Again, certi- or eliminating certifications like this go against everything about that. But what happened is, is listening to some of the previous statements that have been here, I thought maybe I could answer some of the questions that were being, uh, brought up by the opposite, uh, the other people who are in favor of this. Uh, they say they haven't heard or seen of anybody coming in, and what's the stories, where are these people that have these complaints? Well, you're hearing about them today, they are coming in and talking about it. Uh, as further proof, um, I think we should refer to CFR thirty, or twenty-nine thirty, which is Code of Federalate Regulations. Twenty-nine thirty is equal employment opportunity, uh, rules that are regarded towards apprenticeship programs. And in those rules, it states that anything that put in, as a prerequisite for being put into an apprenticeship program must have substantiated proof that it is necessary to be successful as a predictor of success in that trade. The requirements for high school diploma and GEDs have been multiplied multiple times, proven to be a predictor of success in those trades. You have code books, you have code regulations, you have to be able to read them and interpret them in order to be successful in these trades. Uh, I feel that that was one thing that was, is very important, that needs to be brought up. Also, it, it, the certifications are a tool and an inspector's tool, or toolbox, if required. You don't have the certification, what do you do? If he sees shoddy work, what, what can he do to stop that from being done at that time other than allowing it to be done and maybe, you know, turning down the work afterwards if he remembers, if he can remember to go back and, and check that work? Uh, there's been a downturn in the economy, uh, there are fewer inspectors out there. They don't have the time to walk through and see every bit of installation that's done on a job. In that case, they, they can't just say, well, if it's broke, you'll have to come back and fix it. As is obvious from some of the previous statements, uh, that can be quite costly for homeowners. One of the other things, last thing that I wanted to say, uh, it was asked, have anybody ever been checked on the last Nugget Tower? I can't remember, I think it was about nineteen ninety-six. Everyone on that job, I was working for Savage and Son, and everyone on that job that was a plumber was required to get a certification from the city of Sparks to, to work on that project. So that does answer that, it has been done. We were all required because they wanted to make sure that project was built to code.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Josh Morrow? Okay, thank you, Josh. Andy Barbano?
Is this thing on or off? We got it? Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, TV viewers, and those here in the council chamber. My name's Andrew Barbano, I'm a forty-seven-year Nevadaan. And, um, when I first escaped Fresno to move to Las Vegas in nineteen sixty-nine, I turned in my California driver's license for a Nevada license. And I asked, where's DMV? Well, here it is on Charleston Boulevard. I found the address, it was a twelve-wide mobile home in the middle of a muddy field. I submit that we are still in that, in Pete Kruger's twelve-wide mobile home. I asked a lady when I turned in my license, don't you want any ID from me? Don't you want me to take an eye test, anything? Nope, we don't have any of that regulation here in Nevada. I said, why is that? She said, because Nevada's grown so fast, we haven't thought of a lot of regulations that a, a lot of states have had in effect for years. Well, Nevada is still in Pete Kruger's twelve-wide mobile home when it comes to electrical and plumbing certification. We are the only western state that has nothing on the books with respect to licensing plumbers and electricians. And I'm amazed to hear some of the proponents today, including your staffer, use that as an excuse to remove the regulation on the books that you've decided to unlawfully ignore anyway. Uh, it, it, this is a Kafkaesque circumlocution. I would submit that the, Ms. Alanco here would be in an impossible box if she decided to pursue for construction defects since the two thousand and fifteen Nevada legislature essentially wiped out the right to sue for construction defects. Granted, there were some problems, but the pangs of them has swung way over to the other side. And as a result, if an electrician or plumber who's unlicensed screws up, you can't sue, you can't do anything. Which is one of the reasons why, and I'm here representing the Reno Sparks NAACP today, the, the NAACP unanimously endorsed opposition to this measure at our meeting last week. Just because you haven't enforced it, just because you don't want to go through the cost of enforcing it, uh, just because you want to live in Pete Kruger's nineteen sixty-nine mobile home, you need to do better by your own citizens, and don't fulfill the language of that lady at DMV from nineteen sixty-nine and have Sparks live in the past. Thank you.
Dustin Burke?
My name's Dustin Barker, I'm with Lenar Homes. Lenar Homes is probably one of the largest builders in northern Nevada. And I guess the reason why I'm here is, I'm really proud to, uh, employ across all of our job sites in northern Nevada, probably a thousand trade labor folks. And, uh, it's something I take a lot of pride into, not just the, the building of a quality home, uh, because that is my business and it is my responsibility. But I like to be able to support the community and, and employ as many residents as we can. Uh, I'm in favor of your guys' proposal, and the main reason for me is I think it, it helps promote business and it helps promote jobs, um, by keeping the, the, the current ordinance on the books. I think you're, you're, and if you were to, and if you were to really enforce it, you're going to put a lot of people out of work. And at this time, where northern Nevada is on the, on the rebound and a, on a course of recovery, to, to have something that restricts that opportunity to be able to grow, I think would be, you know, a detriment to our, to our community. And right now, like, as I mentioned, there's several trades, uh, that would fall into this bucket that, there's, there's several companies that would fall into this bucket that don't necessarily have these certifications that, that the ordinance currently requires. And, you know, I, I kind of echo, I won't be too long, but I echo the people that are in favor, and we hear a lot of safety and quality, and, uh, it's hard not to take offense to that. Uh, my business is to build homes, and I, uh, want to build the safest, most, the highest-quality home I can possibly build. Um, and I think that that's, whether this ordinance is in place or not in place, uh, isn't going to have a difference on whether, how my opinion is and how I outlook on my business. So I'm in favor of this, I think it's very responsible that the council is taking the steps that they are, uh, to be able to take advantage of the opportunities out there to promote growth and to keep the current jobs that we have in place. Uh, thank you, and I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Dustin. Uh, Ruth, Ruth Stacy? Welcome, Ruth.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I am a member of Action and of the United Methodist Church. And a disclaimer, I am neither well-financed nor well-organized. But still, I oppose doing away with regulation of the building trades, particularly plumbers and electricians at the apprentice level. Rather than repeat what the homeowners have said, which I would be doing, I want to say, I've been through at least three workshops over in Reno, and I have this hot copy that just came out of the proposed Reno ordinance. A lot of work went into this by a lot of people in the trades and in the industry. I would be very happy to hand it over to someone, like the city clerk, if they'd like, so that you can take advantage of somebody else's creation. The next thing I would like to say is, I think it's absolutely chilling to hear people say that these folks who are going to work on my residence should not be required to know how to read English or be able to, or have a high school diploma of some sort. I have done some work with Northern Nevada Literacy Council. They have a program to help people, without a charge to the person, obtain a GED or equivalent high school diploma. This is a great program, they will work with working men and women to help them qualify. And it is a program where they test, they go to the need of the individual worker, and they help them qualify for that document, which means so much in the job market. We need qualified workers, we need a qualified workforce. We do not need people who cannot meet these qualifications to be doing our plumbing and electrical work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth. John Bartlett?
I'm in opposition.
Thank you, John. Timothy Payne? Timothy Payne? Says here in opposition of ten point two. Tracy Holland? Tracy Holland?
I'm in opposition.
Thanks, Tracy. James Price? James Price? Says in opposition? Joe Felipe? Jose, I'm sorry, Jose Felipe? Says he's in opposition? William Bartlett? Is this another? Pose, thank you. John Russell? John Russell? In opposition of dropping license requirements? Regina Brantley? Regina? Says here in opposition? Nicholas Ashley? Nicholas Ashley? In opposition? Nathan Anderson? Sorry. I was, I was doing good.
It's all good.
Now, now I got Natha, okay. I was doing good for a while.
You were doing really well, I was very proud of you.
Thanks, Natha.
Natha Anderson, a proud resident of Sparks for a number of years. Uh, thank you, Mayor Martini, and the members of the city council. I'm in opposition to this as, for a number of reasons. Uh, but the main reason, actually, is because I'm a teacher. I'm actually also representing the Nevada State Education Association today. The information that was reported appeared that education was being taken out, so I was happy to hear that that was not quite accurate. But as I continued to listen to the information, this is not a good thing. It's just not going to help our builders, and it's also not going to help my seniors this year. I have many of my students who do not wish to go on to college, and I respect that. Many of them, though, have talked about trying to do something in the trades, and so I've been trying to get them more information about that. One of my students came in the other day and was like, Ms. Anderson, I got something off the computer. Should I do it? No, all you have to do is just sign up for some classes. There's no practice, there's no apprenticeship, and there's no real-life skills. As a teacher, I know that it's really easy to read a book, which, by the way, this is pretty good, not great, though. It's much different when you're actually practicing it. And that's why I think it's very important to have the apprentice skills continue. Thank you.
Richard Daley, also known as Skip. Slim Jim, good job, Skip.
Okay, thanks, member of the council, Richard Daley, lifelong resident of Sparks. Um, and what we're talking about here is minimum standards of qualifications, and that's, I believe, what the ordinance currently says. And you can obtain that minimum standard that Sparks has set out in a variety of ways. You can obtain it through apprenticeship, you can obtain it through other training, and it can all be designed and put into the ordinance on what's recognized, what's accepted, what's not. Those are some of the very things that we talked about when City Arena was going through this stuff. Your own staff, uh, Mr. Martini, we've met several times as well, uh, says there were some ambiguities, there were some conflicts, some things that didn't exactly line up with the questions were asked. Instead of throwing the whole thing out, we should go back and we should address those things in compliance with the laws you saw Simon and Hanson brought forward. And I'm sure you're going to get advice from your legal counsel that says you're perfectly clear, but I wouldn't ignore Legislative Council Bureaus, uh, deal there. It's subject to challenge, and as a citizen of Sparks, we don't want to have, go through this exercise and then just have to go through it again uh, if city attorney isn't exactly right, which has happened before. So I would suggest that you vote no on this, go back to the, the deal, try to address these minimum standards that you have, that you set up for the safeguards. When this was passed back in ninety-two, everybody knew what it meant. It was put in for a reason, and I'm sure valid reasons at the time, maybe there's some history on it. And when you look at things and people's, you know, I've had my concerns over the licensing of plumbers, electricians. My union doesn't do that type of work, there are some lines in jurisdictions, various things, we argue with them from here, here and there. But we wanted to make sure we had a language that gets it right. So if it's a matter of having it or not having it, whether I get those issues addressed or not, I think we should have the standards. And when you look at things in my trade for the laborers that require licensing, and you'd be surprised, there's more than you think. You're doing asbestos abatement work, you've got to give a certificate to the state that you've been through minimum training, and the state chooses who they recognize in that, you meet that standard, a variety of ways to do it, apprenticeship or other training, as I said. Anyone out there in the streets doing traffic control, setting up lane closures and various things, you've got to be certified, uh, state requires it, same thing with flaggers. So there are reasons and minimum standards that we put in place to address the issues, public safety and concern, various things, and make sure we have a minimum standard of quality. So the city of Sparks, wanting to have a particular project built downtown, uh, which we've all wanted for twenty-plus years, we've been watching it, but we shouldn't sell our souls, we shouldn't lower our standards in the community. The end here does not justify the means. Sparks does things usually better, I have to say that we're not headed down the right path on this one. Unfortunately, Reno's, uh, Reno's got it better than you guys at this point, and I'm hoping you'll follow suit with what they're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Skip. Ron King? Welcome, Ron. Welcome, Ron.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, it's great to see you made great leaps since our many years of competition in the printing industry. See you where you are today. It's great. I am going to speak in opposition to the removal of certification. I'm going to go home tonight, as I have the past few nights since I learned about your efforts to do, to remove this. Wondering whether my house is properly wired and properly plumbed, because it does fall under that 23-year window in which you have not enforced it. And I say that if someone thought it was important enough 23 years ago to put it into the ordinance, that we should have done something about it. And I say with all due respect, and having after served well over 12 years for the city of, as a citizen representative for the city council, or for the city of Sparks and citizens in the Health Department, you can find me on the wall, a decade there, and several committees in the city of Sparks, I will say with all due respect, I'm going to be quite blunt, and I know the mayor has talked about us being humane and not clapping, we are in a democracy, a republic, we have the freedom to do that. But I would like to say shame on the city councils that did not, before you, enforce this. And I am disappointed that you, as a city council, are not enforcing it, and that you're even to the point of wanting to remove it. Because, and I'm also disappointed in our city engineer, whose salary I partially pay, that he has questions that he can't and has not even answered yet, and is still presenting this to you to have it removed. I would hope that you would delay it, if not completely ignore it at this point, because I don't think that we're at a point where we've got our unions, non-unions, not fighting with each other. And I'm sorry to hear that our major developers, our manufactured homes and that type of thing, are not really concerned, and even though there may be a difference between licensure and certification, my wife is a schoolteacher and she is certified and licensed, and she is teaching our children in the city of Sparks. And so, I would say with due all respect, with all due respect, that you not diminish this ordinance, that you vote in opposition of 10.2, and I appreciate your time, and hope that you will go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dale Lowry?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, once again, just real quick, a couple of things that I forgot, and maybe I can answer some of Mr. Smith's questions as far as apprenticeship are concerned. And just to reiterate, this is not a union versus non-union issue at all, this is an industry issue from the electrician standpoint of both union and non-union, and plumbers. The Nevada Board of Plumbing Examiners put this together for licensing, so the people that approve licensing would not have to go out and do the testing. We do the testing, we do the licensing, and we require, under the codes, every three years, the code changes. And if you look at the codes from the standpoint of the plumbers, the plumbing and the electrical code, they're two of the biggest codes that are out there, and you've got to know those in order to pass the exam. But you also need to know those in order to work in the industry. And with that said, we require to renew every three years that you, you take classes for continuing education. We require that you have eight hours of classing, or you have to retest. Now, it's not required that a plumber have to have gone through an apprenticeship program. All you have to show is four years in the field and, and working, and you can apply to take the exam. You don't have to have gone through an apprenticeship program. But an apprenticeship program is very good from the standpoint that it is regulated by the, the State Apprenticeship Council, and the State Apprenticeship Council is appointed by the Labor Commissioner, and they set up all the guidelines for that, and we have to follow them. Therefore, yes, we have to have GED or high school diploma. Now, with that said, we've also formed in both, from both respects, plumbers and electricians, a pre-apprenticeship where you don't necessarily have to have that, but during that pre-apprenticeship and that first year, if you can get your GED and move on, you can get into the apprenticeship program. So we've, we've tried to set up the avenue so that you don't have to have done that. I think that the way the ordinance is written right now, it is antiquated, it needs to be revised. I think we could set up a workshop with everyone and your staff, and we could come up with something that would really work for the city of Sparks. I'll answer any questions if you might have them, or?
Thanks, Dale. Ms. Ratty has a question.
Can you, so are you a nonprofit organization, or is your organization a nonprofit organization?
I'm a plumbing contractor. I have D and D plumbing.
Not your personally, but you?
But I'm the, I am the chairman of the Nevada Board of Plumbing Examiners, who issues the licensing of plumbers' cards in the state of Nevada.
And that organization is a?
That organization is a 501(c)(6).
(c)(6), thank you. And then, what do you do for English, English as second language learners in your programs?
What do we do for English for a second language? I don't do anything personally, from my company's standpoint.
Right. Not, not your company, but I'm really looking at the board and the, and the testing and the licensing.
I'm not sure that the plumbing UPC is even written in another language other than English.
So English proficiency is a minimum requirement, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you help me understand this? I, I just, I'm not real familiar with the industry, so I'm, I'm, so help me understand, when you say that you can get, you can go and take the tests after working for four years in the field?
Correct.
How can you work for four years in the field if you don't have a certificate?
Well, it, it will probably get more and more complicated as, as requirements come forth to work in the industry. The program that was set up in the city of Reno, of course, you could say this is not Reno, I understand that. But we came up with a program that didn't require licensing of, of certain individuals on the residential side.
Okay, so there'd be a, a layer below apprentice where you could start to gain some skills?
They could be, yes.
Okay. Thank you for helping me, that, that's, that's helpful.
Okay. Dale. Mike Pilcher? Pilcher? Close. We did good. Thanks, Mike.
Hello, and Merry Christmas, in case I don't get to see you in the next 11 days. We are in opposition to bill 2699, and by now you've heard a lot of testimony, especially with respect to the analogies to the end user, right? There's individual accountability, certification testing is a big part of that, whether we solicit our services from a hairdresser or from an ER doc, right? And at some point, like Skip alluded to, it was so important with respect to the trades of electrician and plumber, it was codified. That's important to remember. I think Mr. Reader did a great job of explaining that that quality craftsmanship is the first step in consumer protectionism, right? And remember that those residential commercial properties, they change hands down the road, 10, 20, 30, 40 years, they get remodeled. Where's the, where's the end users' protection? And I think that's where you come in, whether it's a small business owner, a grandmother in a home that's been there for 50 years, or a new commercial investor. And I wanted to briefly go down a more broader perspective with, with you all. The governor just called for a special session with respect to the Faraday deal with electric cars. If the legislature passes and the governor signs, it will, these taxpayers, all of us, you and I, will be into the electric car industry for about $1.5 billion estimate. Now, the goal of that and part of the component is to harvest the energy of the sun and turn it into electricity. And the expectation of electric cars for the end user is that solar panels will be atop most commercial residential properties in the long term, as we convert over maybe to electric transportation. That's important. So I think a wonderful billion-dollar investment from all of us at the state level, in comparison with the small amount of investment that the training and the $10 to $20 certification testing requires is, should be taken into perspective, right? $1.5 billion we are all investing in. So, Northern Labor is a proponent of continuing education and continuing the investment into the quality skills, skilled trades. And lastly, a lot's been mentioned about education. Nevada ranks number 50 in a lot of things, we should be number one in, and vice versa. And what's been recognized by the state level is that education's a key component of bringing up the standards for all of the state, with, especially with respect to skilled workers. And last session, 78th session, 1.3 estimated billion-dollar tax on small businesses and businesses throughout Nevada was enacted with the goal of improving education, both white collar and blue collar education. So I think you should take that into consideration, too. Businesses are invested in this, too, and they need some consumer protectionism, too. Thank you very much.
Yikes. Thanks, Mike. Scott Fullerton?
I already spoke, I'm still opposition.
You haven't changed. I was just checking, I wanted to make sure. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Scott. Okay, that's it, kids. That's all I have. Anybody else? Come on up, sir. Missed, missed a card? Anybody else missed a card? Just state your name.
I did, I did turn that a card.
Leon Grizzles, my name.
I saw it back here somewhere, Leon, maybe I just skipped.
Oh, okay. I go by Mickey, maybe that's why. I, I'm in opposition to overturning the certificate, and I'm not, I'm not a builder, I'm not with labor or anything like that. I'm, I'm a homeowner. I've lived in Sparks for 35 years. But I'm a little more than beyond a homeowner is that I also am a landlord. I have two single-family dwellings and one condominium in the city of Sparks that I ran out. And I, whenever I have a problem, I consider myself a good landlord. Whenever my tenants have a problem, they call me, I immediately get on it to fix it. There's a couple of things that I don't mess with, and it's plumbing and electric. And I need to feel confident when I call somebody out there, where the contractor sends out somebody, that they're certified, to know what they're doing. Beyond even for permits, we, I heard people talk about getting permits for certain items and stuff like that, and that would kind of cover it to make sure it's okay. Sometimes the certified electrician will say, "No, you don't need a permit for that. We can just do this here." And I have to be confident that he's telling me the truth, because God forbid that one of my tenants get burned up or something like that. And that's why it's a big issue to me, is that I want to feel safe when they come to my, my properties to take care of it, as well as my own home. I babysit my grandchildren now. I don't want anything to happen in my own home. But that's why I'm opposed to it. It just seems to me that, that the smarter our people are out there, the better it is for us, and I count on you as the city council and the mayor of Sparks to keep us all safe. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Leon. I, I do have your card, I skipped over it, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So that's all the cards I have. Anybody else want to speak? Last chance, going, 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 gone. Okay. So bring it back to the council for questions, action. What have you, first of all, questions, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions, and maybe you guys aren't the ones to answer this, but when an inspector goes on the job and there are no problems on this job, do they want the, us to require him check the cards, and if they don't have the cards, they deem the work not correct?
I can, if I'm understanding your question, what would our procedure be if in fact we were enforcing this section of the code?
Well, let's just say that if we're doing what we're doing now.
Right.
We're not enforcing it. We go out there, there's nothing wrong with the job, and now we start enforcing it, and all we want to see is the cards, we don't care if the job is done correctly or not. What happens?
I, I will be blunt, this, this code has nothing to do with the job being done right or wrong.
It's up to code.
It's up to code.
Right.
So, my opinion is this, the minute my building inspectors, our building inspectors are on the job, on a permitted job, the first thing they should be asking for if plumbing or electrical work is going on is to see the cards.
Okay, just a comment on Mr. King's comments. You said that we haven't enforced codes in 23 years. Is that what you said?
What's that?
You said that the city of Sparks has not enforced codes in 23 years? Well, we have enforced all the codes, we just haven't asked for the cards. There's a big difference there. Okay, so how does it work? Are they asked for the card before they look at the job, or what's this going to look like if we require cards?
If we require cards?
Mm-hmm.
If it is the council's pleasure, yes. Well, that's where I was going. If it's the council's pleasure that we are going to enforce certification of, of plumbers and electricians, a few things need to happen. We need to, and it, and part of this is in the, admittedly in the proposed amendments that I'm reviewing right now, some of this is covered. We need a mechanism?
I've, I've read it already, I know, I just want you to say it again.
Okay, you start. All right, so there will need to be a recognized authority that's issuing the certificates. I do not believe that the?
City of Sparks?
The city of Sparks should be in a position to say you are certified or not. You will come to us with a certificate. We will have to look at procedurally what our fee needs to be to acknowledge this. There are a few ways we can go. One thought I had is that with every building permit that involves electrical and, and/or plumbing, or both, that it will be up to the licensed contractor applying for the permit to provide the names and proof of certification of everyone who'll be working on the job. That could be part of the building permit prior to issuance, we could ask for that as a check. It would be similar to special inspects, inspection requests that we sometimes have to make. And then, upon initiation and during the project, it will be incumbent upon our building inspectors to enforce this portion of the code.
Okay, so last question, if, if I'm an electrician or a plumber, I've been working the trade for 10 years and I do not have a card, and we pass this, what happens to me? I now need a card to work?
As I understand the proposed amendment, a notice of violation will be issued on the job and a stop work order. They, they will stop work. Up to stop work.
But I will not be able to get a job in a union shop or any other shop because they don't have the certification, even though I've got 10 to 12 years in it. Possibly?
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I have some questions, too, John. What's the penalty for not having a certificate?
Currently?
Yeah.
Our, our code would make it a misdemeanor, and the person performing the labor would be fined up to $1,000 and would have to go to Sparks Municipal Code, or Municipal Court.
It's a pretty harsh penalty.
May I just follow up on that?
Please.
Where is that?
It's in the front, it's in the front end of the code. Any violation of the code is a misdemeanor.
Not in what's attached to our agenda.
Not in, not in Title 10, it's in one or two.
Councilman, Councilwoman Ratty, that was part of what I was perplexed with. This existing code we have today does not say what happens specifically for a violation.
Right.
Since it is silent, it falls back to the rest of the code and makes it a misdemeanor.
Can I get a copy of that, because I'm having a hard time following?
Yep.
That, thank you. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Ed.
No, it's a good question, because that's kind of where I was coming. I, I'm going to make a couple of comments, which probably really aren't questions, but I've heard a lot of testimony today that, you know, you've got to have a, a certificate to get your haircut, but there's a state board that oversees that. There's a state board that oversees almost every other, how come there's not a state board? We have two of our assemblymen here today with us. How come there's not a state board that oversees labor? Because I don't think we oversee any type of labor in the city of Sparks outside of our own people. So, and we're held to federal and state regulations with that. So I'm, I'm having a hard time fitting this into a city-type ordinance, and why is it, why is it incumbent on us to do it now all of a sudden, when in the past, we haven't done anything? And, and to go back to Ron's example, what, I have a guy that, you know, worked for the last 20 years and done excellent work and built it homes for me, but now he can't have a job? And if he does have a job, he's subject to be fined up to $1,000? There's, there's just a lot of problems. So, and, and as far as the education goes, I happen to know a very successful businessman right here in Sparks who couldn't read, he's 68 years old, couldn't read until he was 60 years old, never had a high school diploma, and built a business in the machining business that's worth well over $10 million. The guy's very good at what he does. So, some people are just not inclined to get an education. And for him, the only reason he got his, learned to read, because he wanted to finally get an education at 60 years old. So, I, I get that part, too. I know those kids that I went to high school with that didn't want to do anything else, they just wanted to go to work and make money. So, the way I kind of see this whole issue, I see it as a couple phases. I see it commercial and I see residential. The residential standards are lower or different, let's say different, not lower, and then the ones in commercial. So I, I can see, you know, some type of separation there. But I think more than anything with what I believe you're going to tell us on the Legislative Council Bureau's letter today, that I'm in favor of a workshop, and let's look at this in more detail. I think we've raised a lot of questions, and I don't think it's fair to anybody who's currently working to not be able to work. So there has to be some way to alleviate that problem, too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can go ahead and just bounce off a little bit there of what Mr. Councilman Lawson talked about and being a state issue, because this is one of my big concerns right now, is where this involves the city. You know, where's our, because we operate under the Dillon's Rule in, in the city, and where the state legislators control the last report we had. 94% of what we do is controlled by the state legislators. They dictate to us what, what goes on. In the last, I believe, in my 15 years been here, this has been on the state legislative agenda for almost every one of those years to get this program in effect. Do we have any idea why the state legislators haven't done anything with this? What's the problem?
So specifically as to your question, as it relates to Dillon's Rule, I think there is an underlying question here as to what the city's specific authority in terms of this type of regulation is. If you think back to the last legislative session, AB 493 passed, and it was the effective local home rule bill for cities. And essentially, it says, you know, with a broad brush, that cities may act on things that are deemed to be matters of local concern. But specifically exempted from the statutory definition of matters of local concern are things where there's a state interest that requires uniformity of regulation across jurisdictions, and the regulation of business activities subject to substantial regulation by state or federal agencies. So in this case, what you're hearing is that there's, there's nobody technically, there's nobody technically warranting the competency of the employees of plumbers or electricians, but they are operating under a general license that is issued by the state.
But nobody checks up on it on the state level? They want to, they want to push that off to local level to have to do that?
I don't know.
You know, quite honestly, I would be, I'm assertive, somebody who's been in the industry for 40 years, that we spend millions of taxpayer dollars to make sure that a hairdresser has a certification and license to work, but we don't care on a state level about plumbers and electrician. That's absurd. That's absurd. Why would anybody even think about something like that? That, you know, nothing against the trade of being, you know, hairdressers and manicurists, but I'm not sure it's a life and death situation compared to electricians and plumbers, and to have a gang of 63 that can't pass a bill to go and do that, that's absurd. I mean, that's incredibly, I just don't understand it. It just doesn't make any sense to me. John, are you representing the building department today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I'm going to ask the fire chief next, I want to go ahead and talk about the last 22 years in which this code has been in effect. You know, first off, there was a thing brought on up, you know, it was new today in the meeting that there is a case out there where we didn't use this ordinance. Can you expand on that, or what's, what, how did we use this ordinance in 22 years?
Can you repeat the question, Councilman Schmidt? The allegations that we have used it?
Yeah, there was two people that said that we, we have exercised this ordinance. I'm, I'm not aware of any, I've been told we don't have any. I think Mr. Lawson asked the question. Tell me, tell me where we use this thing, what was the circumstances that we used this particular code?
My discussions with the building official went like this. Mark, Mr. Miranda, when our building inspectors show up on the job as a normal course of their inspections, do they require these cards? We do not. Now, I am curious as to the allegations that we've done it, if we were asking for a certificate card or proof of building permit?
So, we don't, we don't know for sure where, if we ever asked anybody for a certificate, we asked them for a business license or the contractor's license?
We may have asked to see a building permit.
A building permit, but not a certification?
I would like to hear, I have heard of one case where our most senior building official did ask to see a qualification card, and was on a project where he discovered work was being done without a permit.
That's a whole different, that's a whole different thing than what we presented with.
To me, that's, that's our, our most experienced building inspector, who was probably around in '92 when this code came in, getting someone's attention.
So that, let's go back to the explosions, the deaths, I'm going to try to use the exact terminology that people had, "People are going to die if we take this off the books." Those are exact words in testimonies, because I wrote them down as they, as they were, they were given to me, because I want to, in 22 years, we're not sure that we've ever gone ahead and actually asked for certification of projects out there.
Correct.
You know, I did business in this city for 10 years before I became a city councilman, in which I no longer went in, was in the construction business in the local area. I was in violation of this ordinance, because my contractors were supposed to have all this stuff figured out, right? And I hired them, you know, I hired a contractor, so I'm ultimately liable, because on every construction project, the employees aren't liable. The owner of the subcontractors, and the ultimate liability belongs to the developer and the owner of the project. That's who it, that's who it falls to. Do you have any reason to believe that any of your inspectors are not inspecting the projects, you know, completely to the code?
I do not.
Do you know of any instance where an inspector inspected something, that the thing wasn't to code, that was able to be inspected, and we've had loss of life, we've had explosions, we've had cross-connections going on?
I do not.
Thank you. Then my next question is for the fire chief. See, if I gave you a forewarning there, you're going to be in the hot seat, you know, so thank you for, my, my question comes down to, you know, you have a half a dozen plant inspectors and, and, you know, inspector, field inspectors are out there, and probably one of the most important fields of fire suppression out there. Do you have any records of 22 years of gas explosions and, and loss of life because we didn't check for certifications?
For the record, Tom Garrison, could you repeat that, gas explosions?
I've got here that if we, if we pull this law off the books, it's been on the books for 22 years and hasn't been enforced, that we're going to have gas explosions and loss of life because we're going to have non-certified people working on the job. I'm assuming for the 22 years, we've had non-certified people working on jobs, because no one knew about this until three months ago. So in 22 years, do you have any records of gas explosions or loss of life due to a worker on a job that wasn't certified?
Well, first off, let me tell you, your question's catching me completely off guard, because I did gather data for you with electrical problems, not gas problems.
Okay, we'll just stick with electrical problems, then. I mean, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Tell me how many electrical problems we've had.
So in the last eight years, we've had 20 fires that had an electrical component to it. But the data that I shared with you stated that even though there was an electrical component related to the cause of the fire, there was no evidence that this electric, electrical component was installed by a certified or a non-certified installer.
And most of those fires are due to Nevada Energy's equipment?
Um...
Excuse me. A connection that Nevada Energy has to the...
Yeah, um, of, of those 20 fires, four were smart meter related.
Okay. Do you have any doubt in your mind, your fire inspectors or plant checkers, that they're not inspecting the code?
I have no evidence to believe that they are not enforcing the codes. I believe that all the work that they check ensures that the codes are fulfilled.
Thank you, Chief. And if I can, Mayor, just one last comment. You know, I've, you know, I've had 40 years in the, in the building trades as a general contractor. One of the things that I've done since day one and always is that, you know, I want to, I want to build safe projects, and I want my, my customers, my buyers, to, to have a very secure feeling about the product they buy from me. And so I go to great lengths of liability to make sure that my employees are protected, my customers are protected, and liability issues. And I'm, I'm looking at this now in a, in a whole different light than I think when it comes to certification, licensing, all those issues. I think those are actually sidebar issues to what we're looking at, you know, and today as a city councilman, my responsibility, liabilities go to the citizens. That's who hired me for the job, that's who, so I have to look at the citizens' liability. When I, when I look at it like that, I placed three phone calls, and I talked to three different attorneys. Now, normally, and nothing against our city attorney or the other attorneys in here, if you ask a question to 100 attorneys, you're going to get 100 different answers to it. But these three attorneys all had exactly the same, same answer to the question. And my question was, with this law on the books, in light of the last 22 years of not checking certification and everything, and we've seen skyrocketing construction defects in it, where does that place the city of Sparks in the construction? And, you know, I, I believe that the construction defect laws were not totally dismantled in the last legislative session, they made it tolerable for people to, to be able not to litigate it to death, and their businesses confiscated in the, in the process. So the, I, the question I ask is, where does that fall, the city of Sparks, from the past 22 years, before we knew about this, before it came to our attention? And then where does it come at today that we, we know of this? And all three attorneys had exactly the same answers. City of Sparks becomes the number-one target. They're the deep pockets, they're the ones that we're going to go after on every construction defect lawsuit, if this, if this law stays on the books, because if your inspector walked on the job site and, and did not ask for the certification, and something happened, we're liable. And, and I, I think that's probably true, that the city of Sparks and the citizens are under tremendous liability here. So my recommendation is that this is taken off the book. Now, if we want to go start having the public hearings and workshops and the stuff to go ahead and take and start looking at how to develop a proper code that, you know, the council wants to, to work with, and the citizens and the builders and everybody can, can work with, you know, we can, we can start that process. But every day that this is on the books, especially from today forward, because we've had a chance to talk about it in public, it becomes a big liability to the city of Sparks and the taxpayers. And so I, you know, I'm looking at this a different way, get it off the books, and then if the, if the staff and council chose, choose to start the workshops to be able to get something, because this particular ordinance, the way it's written, the way it sits on the books right now, is a disaster. It's a disaster, it's waiting for a very large paycheck. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ratty?
Speaking of different opinions from different attorneys, we haven't really addressed that topic yet, so we have a letter that's addressed to all of us saying that the NRS has a, some questions about our process, so would you like to address that?
The opinion from LCB regarding business impact statements, as Assemblyman Hanson predicted, I disagree with the conclusion. I think that it's an incomplete analysis. And ironically, I think it's incomplete in the very first step of the process. And the, the rule that we're talking about, or the statute that we're talking about, says that if, if a local government is going to adopt a rule, right, and the term "rule" is a statutorily defined thing, then it needs to go through this business impact statement process, except in certain circumstances where it's exempted from the, from the, well, from the process. Now, a rule is, you know, essentially an exercise in legislative function, which is where effectively LCB stopped. But when you look at the statute, and I have it printed, we can put it on the Elmo if you'd like to see it, although I don't really know how to use the Elmo, so... Basically, there are two subparts, right? And the first is that it's this exercise in legislative function, and then it says, "And the effect of, of the adoption will impose, increase, or change the basis for calculation of a fee." What you're dealing with today... Hold on, I'll get my highlighter out. All right, so it's subsection 1, "Rule means..." Thank you. "...an ordinance by the adoption of which a governing body of a local government exercises legislative power, and..." Right? So we'll highlight the "and," because it means that we're going to read the two parts in the conjunctive, right? "An action taken by the governing body of a local government that imposes, increases, or changes the basis for the calculation of a fee that is paid in whole or in substantial part by businesses." Obviously, a repeal does not impose or increase a fee, and so, to be fair to LCB, they do say in a parenthetical, it, that this thing arguably changes the basis for the calculation of a fee. I disagree with that, because I think that language necessarily implies that a fee will remain to calculate. And that is not the case here. There will be no fee, there will be no calculation. There, there is no basis for the fee or the calculation. And so I don't think that what we're dealing with today is a rule under the, by the way that term is defined in state law.
Okay, so you disagree with LCB's opinion, but now knowing that there is a opinion by the state, and a Dillon's Rule state, that we're not following process, what would your advice to us be?
My advice to you would be, again, with all due respect to Assemblyman Hanson and LCB, that this is not the type of opinion that we would usually give weight to in the context of a Dillon's Rule analysis. If this was an attorney's general opinion, we could probably have the discussion, but I don't think that this is really the way LCB opinions are, are used typically.
And if we move forward and the state, in this case, LCB, doesn't agree with what we've done, what would be their path to, what could a sanction be, I mean, what, what would be the consequences?
So in the law...
Potential consequences.
In chapter 237, essentially, there's an appellate procedure to this body, where you make your concerns known, and the, and the body considers the concerns and then makes a decision. That's the path that's spelled out in the statute.
So...
You have my phone, so I can't read it.
Actually, it's been passed down, and I'll, and I'll put that on the, for the, for the record, based on my prior question about the $1,000 fine and the misdemeanor, council has pointed us to a section of the code that's basically a catch-all rule, so that if this, if the ordinance that we're looking at does not define a penalty, there's a catch-all in, in our ordinances that defines that penalty, and it is a misdemeanor and a $1,000 fine, and it's cumulative...
Six months, up to six months.
Up to six months in jails, and it's cumulative daily, so every day that you violate it, it grows. So returning back to that, and just so everybody else in the audience knows what's going on, that's, that's what was on council's phone.
Yes.
So you don't, so back to the question at hand, a consequence for us if we move forward and LCB disagrees?
Is that they can essentially appeal it back to you and ask you to think really hard about what you're doing? But it does not spell out next steps beyond that, so I assume that the next steps beyond that would be a trip to district court.
If, if we moved forward, and somebody felt that that was not appropriate, that we were doing this without going through the, and basically what they're asking us to do is do a business impact statement, right?
Yes.
So if we move forward without going through that process of a business impact statement, is there, could somebody threaten us with an open meeting law violation or anything like that?
No, the open meeting law is separate and distinct from this. This is a, a special procedural requirement when the body adopts a rule.
Okay, great.
So it's, it's a separate deal. I would actually, since we're talking about this, if you'd indulge me, there is an important distinction between what, what this bill does and what's going on in Reno, and that is that Reno is adding...
Right.
...this back in. They certainly fall under the definition of a rule.
So it's your opinion that Reno should be doing a business impact statement? We do not, because we are actually eliminating a fee?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the complete elimination of the fee is the key to the analysis, in my view.
Right.
If it was just reducing it or otherwise changing the basis by which it was calculated, you would probably fall within the grasp of the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Thorne. Mr. Martini, a couple of questions for you.
Thank you.
So the...
I thought you were talking to me.
Other one.
Sure.
Sorry.
Sure.
So the, there's been some testimony that we've used this in the past.
Yes.
I, I think the thing that I'm puzzling over a little bit is that there's a fee schedule that goes along with it. that goes along with it. And so typically, if there's a fee schedule, there's a process to collect that fee. There's, you know, we've just updated all of our accounting software. You know, there would need to be a line item somewhere in a system so that we could collect that fee. And so is it fair to say that, based on testimony today, that we've used, perhaps we've used this in the past, you gave an example of a senior building official asking for a card, or perhaps the Nugget Tower almost 20 years ago, where we asked to see everybody's card. But we're not, on a daily basis, implementing this, where fees are being collected from individuals who are in the trades?
Councilwoman Raddick, my research showed that between 2006 and 2008, we issued 46 of these certificate acknowledgements.
Say that again?
2006 to 2008, we issued 46 of these. But we show no records of actually asking anyone if they had it.
But we did issue the certificates.
We did. A total of $641 worth of revenue, I believe that the number is. We issued, but no inspection follow-up.
Okay. So here's my concerns. I personally do not believe that it is unreasonable to think that electricians and plumbers should have licensing and certification. I tend to agree with some of my colleagues that it's baffling that it's not being done at the state level, given that licensing and certification is generally handed at the state level. I also tend to agree that the city of Sparks does not want to be in the licensing business. We don't, we don't personally know what it takes to be a good electrician or a good plumber. We do not have the resources to build the capacity to be the licensing body. We do not want the liability with being the licensing body. It was interesting to me to hear that Clark County is doing this. And so I'd like to know a lot more about what is actually happening in Clark County, because some of the consequences that we're being told from what might happen if we were to implement this, if it's happening in Clark County, which is one of, been one of the fastest-growing communities in our state, or frankly, nationally, then the ability to maintain a workforce and to move forward seems like it must be possible, because it's happening. So I'd like to know a lot more about that. But I have some serious issues with the way that this is currently written. And I have a really big issue with that piece that, really, I've just understood for the first time today of, sorry, Siri, I don't want to talk to you, of the piece about $1,000 a fine day. So we're talking about, just to be clear, we're talking about an ordinance that we have not enforced for years. There are people out there who are working, probably as we speak, and there will be a law on the books that says what they are doing is illegal to the point of a misdemeanor, $1,000 a day fine and six months in jail.
Yes.
That is probably a step too far for me. So I would, so we clearly need to rewrite this. The other piece for me is, there's a section in there that says substantial evidence of qualifications. It doesn't say what the substantial evidence of qualifications are. And it's followed immediately by a line that says, "A valid plumber's certificate of qualification or a valid electrician's certificate of qualification issued by any other governmental agency shall be deemed substantiating evidence of qualification." But there are no government agencies, at least in this state, that are issuing. And the way it's written, it doesn't define, the gentleman who we heard today, the nonprofit that is doing plumbing certification, it doesn't define ABC's apprenticeship program or the union apprenticeship programs as a place where we could accept that qualification. So in the 46 that were issued, do we even know what we accepted as substantial evidence?
There's no, there's no notes in the permit system that shows what the evidence was. My understanding is that if you had a card in Reno, you could come over to Sparks, show your Reno card, and we'd give you a Sparks card.
And I see some nodding in the audience that that's what happened to me.
And you get to pay the fee again.
And you get to pay the fee.
And this isn't a fee on business. This is a fee on an individual.
On the individual, right, right. So, full transparency on our part, we've had this law. We haven't been enforcing it. That's unfortunate, but that's the case. Going from, you know, today to tomorrow and flipping on the switch and saying that we're going to enforce this is problematic to me. So what I personally believe is, we have a great track record in this city of doing, what I think is doing meaningful governance, and getting feedback from stakeholders, and getting to a place where we have a good solution that has been driven by the people who are impacted by the laws that we are passing. I also believe that there should be a regional solution. And we've got a great example recently where the building codes were updated. There was great controversy over fire sprinklers. Our fire chief had strong opinions about it. The building community had strong opinions about it. We worked a regional solution where staff got together with the parties and came up with something that everybody could agree upon. Not everybody was thrilled. I'm going to get it. Sometimes there's compromises. But that's what I believe that we, as a region, should be doing on this issue, because I don't think it's right for the building community to have, to follow this rule in Reno and this rule in Sparks and this rule in Washoe County. It makes it complicated for business. Inconsistency is better. Now, I'm sure that there are some housing builders in the room today who would say, "No, I'd really rather just have it go away in Sparks." And I respect that. I mean, I really do. But I think that there's a way that we can reach a compromise with folks and have a regional solution. So that's what I think good governance calls for. But given that this one is so problematic, and I understand people are passionate about keeping licensing and certification in the law, but we haven't been enforcing it. There's nothing that's going to change tomorrow. I don't want to yank it, but I would be interested in a moratorium until we can replace it with something that is significantly better, that protects the health and safety of our residents, and at the same time meets the needs of business. Call me Pollyanna, I believe that that can be done. But there's some scary things in here in terms of the city's liability and criminal penalties for people who, for something that has not been enforced for 20 years, that tomorrow they could be in serious trouble with the law. And I don't want that to happen. So that's me.
And we've got somebody, a couple others that want to speak. I just want to say something for me, because I haven't said anything yet today. I brought this up to the council, because it came up in Reno, and I thought it was time for us, as a council in Sparks, to have a discussion about this. I think we've had a wonderful discussion. Maybe people are a little upset, it's taken a long time, staff work, but, you know, I think we've brought a lot of things to light in this discussion. To me, the problem here is liability in the future. If it's up to me, I don't get to vote, but I would vote for it. Let's do away with it now, so we don't have liability in the near future. If you want to have workshops with regional, I've been promoting regional stuff for a long time. So if you want to have, let's knock it out. If you want to have workshops, knock yourself out. Let's do it. The impact statement, I don't see how in the heck it applies here. We're not imposing a new fee. We're not imposing a fee at all. We're not increasing a fee. We're doing away with the fee. So all due respect to LCB, my attorney's has what I believe is the right opinion. So that's where I stand, and that's what I would like to see us do. Let's get rid of it now. No liability. If you want to have a workshop, knock yourself out. Mr. Schmidt?
Just real quick, do we even know if we did a business impact statement when this ordinance was written?
In 1992?
Yeah.
I did not search the records for that.
I don't think it was required, though.
And I just want to make sure with this, that the only thing in the LCB opinion is that city of Sparks doesn't have the right to not tax somebody. Is that right? That we can't, we can't say we're not going to charge a fee versus, because this is a tax on an individual for the right to work in this, this community.
I don't think that I would classify the LCB, that opinion, that way, no. What the LCB opinion to me says is that, under the definition set out in 237-060, they believe it's a rule, because it's an ordinance that's passed by the adoption that is essentially an exercise in legislative power. And then they, in my view, stopped their analysis. It goes on for quite some bit to talk about what is required of the governing body. And the discussion in detail is whether or not the governing body can unilaterally make the determination that what they're doing, even if it is a rule, will or will not impact businesses. Apparently, there's been some trouble around the state with local governments determining by themselves, without really analyzing the question, that it won't impact businesses and not doing the business impact statement on that basis. And that's not what's going on here.
All right. And, you know, so I'm going to agree that I think who we're responsible to, or who's responsible for the city council, is our city attorneys. You know, and like I said before, you'd ask 100 attorneys to get 100 different things. So LCB can make their interpretations of what they want to. But if our attorney is saying that this is invalid, you know, that they, it's not, it's kind of a workaround to get the opinion you wanted, this is what you do to go ahead and get the opinion you wanted, type thing. That's the way I'm looking at it. So I will support, you know, if we want to get into workshops, I'll support. With the community company, I was going to read your approach, this is going to be done. You know, I still think that all this collective energy should be done down in Carson City, because this should be a state issue. This shouldn't be a state, shouldn't be, we shouldn't penalize our people that they should work in the, and by the way, I counted at least six different agencies that would have to certify employees. I know we talk about Reno, Sparks, and Washington County, but the school district does their own, their own thing. You've got RTC doing their own thing. I can't remember who the other one. I counted across the state about 72 different agencies. If an employee wanted to work in this state, they would have to apply to 72 different agencies to get the right to work. I think a state would, this belongs in the state legislature, not on the Sparks City Council.
Mr. Lawson?
Would, tell me legally, Doug, from a moratorium versus striking it down, do we have the same legal protections as a moratorium as we do just flat removing it?
The, well, there's a couple of questions in there, even though you only asked one. The first stop is whether or not...
I haven't been on council for five years for no reason.
Whether or not you can entertain a moratorium today is a question that you'd analyze under the open meeting law, and whether or not appropriate notice was given. And I think that's probably a question for the city attorney to opine on from the dais, rather than me from the podium today. The second question on the liability, I can answer, had I been given the opportunity. I would have said, you know, the way liability is imposed in these cases is, if you go and do an inspection and the flaw is open and obvious in a manner that anybody would have found it, we're going to be responsible. Now that this has been brought to light, obviously, the absence of these cards is probably going to fall into that open and obvious category, but I'm not certain it's a flaw. So I'm not, I'm not totally sure what the liability is, but it's certainly an academic question that I think any enterprising lawyer would love to explore.
[inaudible]
Right? So that's a long way of saying, if somebody wants to challenge the card issue, we're going to spend some money to defend it, for sure. So there is, there is a liability out there that I'm not certain I can calculate accurately for you.
Mr. Adams?
Let me add my two cents worth here. As the chief prosecutor for the city of Sparks, I am not interested in prosecuting anybody, regardless of union or non-union, for going out there and trying to make a living and take care of their family. I totally agree with Mr. Barbano over here. The six-wide trailer and the mud field, that's what this ordinance is. It's vague. It's, in that regard, it's probably unconstitutional. I think it opens us up for selective enforcement. I don't want to see a, any type of minority getting a ticket for something like this. I don't, I don't see where that would do us any good. Mr. Barbano, Mr. Daley, Mr. Hanson, you have all made some excellent points, as have all the people in here today. All I see are dedicated people intent on doing a good job and protecting their community and doing a good job. And we don't see the people in here who could give a rat's behind about doing a good job. I will be more than happy to work with council in the county and in Reno in bringing together something of a regional, regional concept that will do everything that people want to do in here. Protect jobs, protect our community. And in that respect, Councilman Lawson, I would recommend that we just do away with this thing. Forget about the moratorium. If this thing is still on the books, there's still an opportunity for somebody to get cited, which would just bring in more litigation. Get rid of it now, with the understanding that we can, we can do something. And I think that the voices here today, regardless of whether you're a Lennar, and it's just as important for Lennar to have good quality people on its books to protect itself from contractual liability for construction defects as it is those people here who have dedicated their lives and invested their time and energy and additional training to become better at what they are. And I think that because of that, you are entitled to a better salary, just like, just like my attorneys here. They've sacrificed, worked hard, achieved a lot of great, passed the bar, and now they're here. And I'm very proud of all of them, just as all you should be proud of yourselves here.
Okay, kids, we've got one more question. But you know, it's time, it's time to make a decision here, folks, because we kicked the can down the road. I know the Spark City Council loves to make decisions, right? So, you know, right or wrong, I'm ready for Mr. Schmidt to talk.
I'm not, I don't have any more questions. I think Mr. Adams has summed it up quite well. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve bill number 2699, an ordinance amending chapter 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, a second by Mr. Lawson. Yeah, I'm getting there. To approve 10.2 as outlined by staff. Questions? Ms. Raddick?
So I'm not going to be able to support that motion, because I do believe that there needs to be something in place around verifying that electricians and plumbers are qualified to do work. It's my starting point. And that motion doesn't give direction to staff to move in that direction. And so that's the piece that I'm really looking for. Again, I'm, I've come around today that, unfortunately, as much as I believe deeply that that should be in place, that our current ordinance is flawed, and it is deeply flawed. And so I'm willing to vote for removing this ordinance, which I was, which is a surprise to even me, because that's not where I thought I would end up today. But that said, not without direction that we're going to replace it with something that does strive to protect the health and safety of homeowners and workers in our community.
Okay, Ms. Raddick, one thing, realize that, you know, we can't guarantee that it'll be replaced. We can...
Of course, because this body would have to vote in the future.
Yeah, we can guarantee, right. We can guarantee that we will take it up at another time. And if we do away with it, I guess is what you're saying, what you want to do. But re-discuss it, I understand. But I don't think there's any guarantees anywhere where we can maybe do that.
No guarantees in life.
Mr. Adams?
Adams, thank you, sir. The only issue I would have on that would be one of the agenda items. It's whether or not you're going to accept it or reject it. The, I think the appropriate procedure would be to make that initial decision as it was agendized. Then you could direct the city manager to go ahead and initiate discussions or workshops. And as I noted earlier, I am more than happy to devote myself or my staff to this effort.
Right. So I guess what I want to say, if we did away with this year, if you wanted to take it up again, you would do the same thing that I just did with this particular thing. Come to a meeting, say, I want to agendize that we redo the ordinance or whatever. I think that's the process that we usually use. So, just saying. Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. That I do want to see a workshop take place in however we get that done. The last thing, and the reason why that is important for me to get this off the books right now, is there's some guy, or several guys, or several ladies, that are out there working today, trying to make a living, and they just racked up a $1,000 bill today, if we don't get this off the books. And it's six months in jail. It seems totally ridiculous for a guy who's trying to make a living and support his family to be in that type of an owner... to be in that type of an owner's situation. So for that reason, I think it has to go, but on the same token, I think we can come to an agreement somewhere down the road to have something more reasonable.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to support this motion, but I want to say, this is how it's supposed to work. Everybody comes in and talks about it, listens to the both sides of the arguments, and then we try to come up with some kind of an intelligent answer to this. And the answer is that we want to work with everybody, but I think that the, the thing right now is we have to get this off the books, and then we'll work from there. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To Ms. Ratty and to the city manager, what, what can I, as a maker of the motion, what can I include in the, the motion to address your issues that the city manager, or the city attorney would say fits under the, under the title of the, of the item?
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Given strictly that we've been under in this community in terms of following the open meeting law, what I just heard was that the city attorney said that we can't do it under this item the way it's agendized. And I know, I know it gets frustrating for the public that we have all these processes that we have to follow that sometimes seem like they take solutions off the table, and it sometimes feels that way to us as well. Because I would be much, much, you have no idea how much more comfortable I would be voting yes on this if I had assurances from my colleagues moving forward in the vote that this is what we are going to do. However, based on the dialogue today, I am willing to support this motion. And when we get to the comments from the council today, just so everybody understands what's going to happen, I'm going to ask that the county manager initiate a process to work towards, or sorry, city manager, not the county manager. Hey, John?
Get promoted?
No, sorry, Steve. To initiate the work so that we can put something in place that does-
Can we direct the county manager to do things? Because that, I mean, it's, I see it done the other way around.
Because frankly, I'm trying to suck them into. So, so that said, I, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with what I'm about to do, but I also understand that we're not going to violate open meeting law by doing something that's not agendized properly, and I'm going to have faith that we're going to move forward on this to get to a good solution. So I'm willing to support the motion, as is presented.
What I was going to say, Julia, is if we can't do it now, if we can't have it brought up now, or when you talk under comments, I will, on the record, guarantee you that I will bring it up to the council that we'd have a workshop, so.
For the, um, yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Phew, man. All right, here we go. Any more questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously, thank you, everybody. Again, before we leave, thank all of you for being here, thanks for your comments, thanks for being civil and not making this a personal issue. Again, I know it brought a lot of pain to a lot of people, but I think the discussion we had on this today was great, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. We're not having, Steve, we're not having a closed session, are we? Still got a meeting going, folks. Comments from the public? Thank you, comments from the city council or city manager. Mr. Schmidt?
I'm, I'm going to support what Ms. Ratty is about ready to say.
Ms. Ratty?
That's dangerous.
Yeah, great, so then-
Be very careful here. Ms. Ratty?
I would like to ask the city manager to bring forward at our next meet, well, what I'd actually like to do is ask the city manager to begin to engage in regional discussions about how we get to a regional solution on this issue and bring forward a process for us to move on this.
Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Councilwoman. All of the team members will be back in place by the first of the year, and it'll be on our agenda to determine what we need to do, how we need to move forward. We'll take guidance from the city attorney, and then we'll get in front of the, we'll get the people in the, in the room to have those discussions as quickly in January as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. If I could add to that, if it's okay for Ms. Ratty, I would like to go ahead and see this maybe move beyond a regional and ask Nevada League of Cities and NACO to be involved, because this is, you know, this, you know, if we can band together in 2017 and put this thing where it's supposed to be, where it's being handled by the state-
Exactly.
You know, and it's not hodgepodge across, across everywhere, I, I, I think that's where our best solution comes out, is to, to allow all the workers across the state to be operating under one rule. And if they can't get the job done, let it, let us work on getting the job done.
Anyone else signal for their business work adjourned?
I'd like to call, to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of December 14th, 2015 with a roll call.
Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Byby?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
And Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Do we have any public comments on the redevelopment agency meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 5.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of November 23rd, 2015.
Move to approve?
Moved to approve by Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Martini. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
4.1.
Oh, darn it, I jumped. All right, I'm going to suggest that we need to vacate that vote because I didn't approve the agenda. So let's go back, does that make sense?
Motion to vacate.
Second. Aye.
All right, so that's vacated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, great, let's try this again. Sorry, I got, I got too anxious there. So let's try 4.1, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Agency Member Schmidt, seconded by Agency Member Lawson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Now, on to the minutes. Consider-
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Councilman, or Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to 6.1.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Agency Member Byby, seconded by Agency Member Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Item number seven, comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public at the close of this meeting? Great. Do we have any comments from the agency or chief administrative officer? Meeting adjourned. That was one of my longer ones.